Public Safety Briefing, the Reimagining Task Force Report.
Yes, thank you Mayor and Council, and we are dedicating the remainder of our work session today to hear directly from the Reimagining Task Force members and the working group recommendations that have come after many hours of work. And I wanted to start by just extending my appreciation for all the time and effort that these task force members and their partners have put into these recommendations that you're going to hear today. I'm going to turn it over to our Deputy City Manager to frame up the conversation, and then she'll tee it over to the Task Force Co-Chairs, but really looking forward to this opportunity for this dialogue today with Council. Thank you. Nurya?
Thank you, Manager, and hello, Mayor and Council. Just really excited today, and I won't take a lot of time because we've got a lot on the agenda today. I'll say, as you know, we convened, the City Manager convened this task force in August 2020, and we did something a little different with this advisory body. We decided to go in and say, you know what, we're going to help co-create what this task force work is going to do, and we're going to try to center it on those who have historically been most impacted by police violence. And so what you'll see from this task force is that they really took that charge of looking at reimagining public safety in its broadest sense of the word. It is not just about policing, but really thinking about public safety holistically. It includes recommendations on public health. It includes recommendations that inform economic stability and a whole host of others. So I'll say that we, as a task force body, got to see the entire final product at a presentation last Thursday. I will say that the chairs and staff really worked hard over the weekend to get the final report that you received yesterday, and we have also sent that report out to staff who perhaps had not been completely following along with all the task force meetings, and there are staff from public health to code to police who will be impacted by the recommendations, and we wanted to make sure that they started to have an opportunity to start analyzing that as well. So with that, I will stop, and I will say that our task force named two co-chairs for this work, and I will pass that on to Brian Oaks and Paola Rojas.
Thank you, Nurya. Brian Oaks, Chief Equity Officer for the City of Austin and Co-Chair for the City Community Reimagining Public Safety Task Force. We have really been incredibly fortunate to have communities that are most impacted represented in this task force, as Nurya said. They've worked so hard over the last six months and put in hundreds of hours. I feel like it's been thousands of hours in really sort of working not only with task force members, but also engaging and bringing in additional community members through work groups. The task force members spent a lot of time listening and getting input from communities and individuals who are most directly experiencing the brunt of the failures of our current approach to public safety. They've also brought in an expertise and a knowledge of promising practices from around the country that make these recommendations not only innovative, but also evidence-based. I believe my fellow task force members have set an example for those of us in this area of civil service and public administration of how we can collaborate and partner with communities to solve our most challenging crisis that face our cities. And so I'm so honored to have been a part of the task force, to serve as a co-chair, but also want to thank all of our task force members and our work group who've spent enough time and the effort to really sort of make these recommendations possible. And then I'm going to turn it over to my co-chair, Paola Rojas.
Buenas tardes, everyone. My name is Paola Rojas. As a rep for CCU, Communities of Color United for Racial Justice, and co-chair, this has really been a powerful learning experience for me for many reasons. I've learned so much from the creative brilliance of the other task force and working group members. I've also learned deep lessons from the listening sessions with community members. This task force created space for us to actually collectively take the time to creatively imagine and practically think through how we could make Austin a more truly just city. An additional lesson for me is that how we do the work is as important as what we are doing and why we are doing it. Nationally, Austin is being framed as the city that has made the deepest defunding to policing, and yet our city government has yet to make actionable what so many in our community are needing and demanding. While the eyes of the country are watching us, will you, our city government, display the vision necessary and make, match the courage of the many community members who step forward to share stories in order to make deep transformation in this, I would say, historic moment? Hundreds of community members participated, like Brian said, in the working groups and in the community sessions. We held many intimate and then one big public citywide listening session where we heard the brave and vulnerable testimonies of persons who've been harmed by law enforcement violence here in Austin. We put in thousands and thousands of hours of volunteer work, as the City Manager mentioned, and along the way, I was voted as co-chair to this task force. I now have to say, I feel personally accountable for the time, effort, hope, and pain that so many community members have poured into this process. As a mother, I know that the safety and well-being of children and families from communities of color is what is at stake here. And as someone who's been actively working on the harms of policing since I was a youth, which is going on 30 years now, I know that this is a historic opportunity, one that only comes once in a lifetime. As a student of history and social movements, I really bring a longer view of what's happening, and I know that right now is a time where it's actually possible for you to truly reimagine public safety. Just like the abolitionists during the time of formalized slavery who went against the laws and practices of their time, you too have an opportunity to make historic transformation in practice. I hope you take this amazing opportunity. And now I want to invite you to hear the powerful recommendations from our working groups, your constituents.
And we actually have a facilitator that's going to help us since we have eight work groups today, and Rosanna Cruz is going to facilitate that process for us. Rosanna does an amazing job of keeping us on task and with time. So we're going to introduce RC, who will be leading our process to have our work groups do their presentations today.
Thank you so much, Brian and Paola. Thank you, Council, for having me, and I want to thank the City of Austin as your neighbor and your admirer. I am deeply honored to watch this process and know that the country, including my city, New Orleans, is observing the possibility and the beauty of this reimagining. I am going to support the working groups in their sharing with you today. There are eight working groups that are going to present. I'm going to help them keep time. I'm also going to then lead us into the question and answer segment where you'll be able to ask questions. I'm going to ask you to please hold all of your questions. We do have, I believe, we've set up simultaneous interpretation for the many communities that are accessing and watching this meeting today. Is that correct? And so we're asking everyone to speak slowly for the interpreters, and therefore you will have time to jot down notes as the progression of working group presentations goes through, and then we will have a segment where you can ask questions. I'm asking if you could please identify which working group your question is for when I call on you, and then we will go into talking about next steps. Our co-chairs will lead that process of what happens next. And we know that there was supposed to be a hard stop at 5:00 PM Central Time, and I ask your grace, especially because we started almost 20 minutes late, these working groups have put an immense amount of work into these presentations and trimmed them down to the bone. So if it is possible for us to regain that 15 to 20 minutes, I know that all of the working group members would be extremely thankful. So with that, I will invite Amanda Lewis to present for the Violence Survivors Services and Prevention Working Group.
Manager, as this is starting, if you could check with our staff and see if there's flexibility to go till 15 after or so and report back to us. I'm sorry, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I want to make sure one of our speakers, I'm seeing Asia Gare, but I'm also looking for Jen, who might be still in a waiting area. And I still don't see her here. I want to make sure, but we can get started.
I will instantly pop in when you have five minutes left, okay? Is that helpful?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Well, before we get started, I wanted to, of course, I want to introduce myself. My name's Amanda Lewis, and I am chairing the working group for Services for Survivors of Violence and Violence Prevention. And Asia, if you can introduce yourself.
Hi there. My name is Asia Gare. I'm a resident of District Three. Thank you for your time.
And before we shared our recommendations, we feel called and moved to make a statement, so we will make that statement and then lead into our recommendations.
Thank you, Amanda. Do we have Jen now? So as we begin our presentation today, we would like to hold space in remembrance of the three people who were murdered this past weekend: Amanda Broderick, Alyssa Broderick, Willie Simmons III, as well as their families and community, who are also victims of violence. Our community is in deep mourning right now, and it is as important as ever that Austin reimagine public safety. We know that the system failed them. These brave women did everything the system asked them to do to find safety, and still we are here mourning the loss of these three lives. As a work group concerned with survivor safety, abuse and assault, gun violence, police violence, and preventing these and other forms of harm, we know our community must do better.
With them in mind, we offer these recommendations as a roadmap towards more creative visions of building safety and addressing the root causes of violence. So we do have a PowerPoint presentation, I think that was shared with City Council. I'm not sure if there was access to that. Thank you. So we'll go to the next slide, please. So our working group, I'm not going to list all the amazing brain power we have on this working group, but you can see comes from a range of organizations and individuals, from service providers to abolitionists working to reimagine. Very proud of their work, and just a few of us are presenting today. Next slide. So our working group developed a set of core values and group values in addition to the working group, to the overall task force. We wanted to make sure that our recommendations were survivor-centered, that we're thinking about the individuals in different communities, but especially those most impacted by violence. We wanted to understand that when we're talking about victims, we're talking about people who are at different levels of proximity to violence, whether they're family members or people who have been harmed, people harmed by state-level violence, but we wanted to make sure to broaden that. We also believe in healing justice, that no matter where you are, people need, have different healing needs and deserve access to those various healing needs. So we want to decentralize those healing resources for different communities, and they need to be able to be outside of the criminal justice system. We know so many people do not report to police, but still need healing resources in the community. We also believe in systems accountability, so the criminal justice system needs transformation, as do the organizations that serve our communities. I think white supremacy needs to be eradicated in various ways, and there needs to be a process of evaluation and accountability to make sure that happens with the organizations that the city funds. We want healing to be culturally affirming. We know that anti-racism work is anti-violence work. When we think about the root causes of violence, we're thinking about oppression, racism, sexism. And so doing that work to affirm identity is also anti-violence work. And of course, trauma-informed. We know any people interacting with the system might be someone who has experienced violence in a different way. So we need to holistically think about how we treat people that are experiencing trauma and violence. Everyone deserves healing access. Next slide, please. We also wanted to take a second to mention that I think one of the core, one of the goals of this working group was to also provide a recommendation on victim services, and we will do that at the end of the presentation, but we wanted to just affirm and state how important it is that we think holistically about all the needs of survivors. As I mentioned, very few report to law enforcement, and so we need to diversify and decentralize those services and prevention resources for survivors of violence and not focus on one organization, but that it takes a lot of different groups to do the work of helping to address the needs of victims and survivors. Next slide. So I will go ahead and pass it to Jen for the next set of recommendations.
Thank you. I'm Jen Margulies. Our next recommendation, specifically getting into some of the programming and initiatives that we recommend, we wanted to say first of all that we are well aware that communities who don't turn to policing are already finding ways to create safety and prevent violence. We are recommending a community-rooted safety grant program. This would be a permanent city grant fund of at least $350,000 a year that would really work to elevate and support existing grassroots community-based strategies for creating safety, for healing harm, preventing violence. And it would also support community members in developing their practices and building capacity for some new initiatives that would deepen community safety strategies. Eligible organizations and groups we're envisioning are groups whose primary purpose is to work in culturally rooted ways with people and communities who are most impacted by racism and poverty and the violence and surveillance of the traditional policing system. We're recommending a low-barrier program, so applicants don't need to be 501(c)(3) organizations. We recommend that Austin Public Health or whatever city entity administers this grant program would follow the low-barrier mini-grant protocol that the Equity Office has developed to keep this funding accessible to initiatives that are led by and for communities most impacted by violence and also by violent systems and policing. And we should note that the particular activities mentioned here are only examples of possible activities under these main program areas that we want to see supported of safety and immediate well-being, healing, and prevention. A second recommendation regards a trauma recovery center. We strongly recommend that through the Office of Violence Prevention, Austin provide $1 million in funding for the creation of a trauma recovery center, which would provide free trauma-informed therapy. Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you. Let me slow down, too. Yes, I just, thank you. I just realized that. So this trauma recovery center model, successful trauma recovery centers make free, immediate mental health resources available after incidents of violence. They're located in high-crime areas to serve victims that often don't access other services. They address the needs of survivors who are traditionally underserved. So that might be people experiencing street violence, people experiencing gun violence, people who are homeless, LGBTQ+ victims, communities of color more broadly. So like the successful trauma recovery centers in Los Angeles, we would further recommend that the Trauma Recovery Center sites or sites in Austin be located in areas that are most affected by violence and that they be staffed and led by community members who are most affected. Next slide, please. Thank you. So recognizing that sex workers are frequently victims of violence and are unprotected by existing systems, specific strategies are needed to help increase safety. We will address some policy changes that will help increase sex worker safety later in this presentation. This slide details some new initiatives that we're recommending to affirmatively improve the conditions that currently leave sex workers vulnerable to violence in our community. So specifically, we recommend providing around $460,000 in the first year and then $260,000 annually to fund sex worker outreach services. And we have a list that we have provided here that includes serving people within the community to strengthen the data we have, peer support programming, including a bad date list, paid peer mentorship and mutual aid, street outreach and harm reduction, a city-funded public health campaign against the stigma that often comes along with sex working, unhoused and drug-using populations, which makes people less safe, and cultural competency trainings for the providers, whether that's legal, medical, or social service providers, who are, who are the resources that folks might turn to, making sure that those resources are competent culturally to serve sex workers. Next slide, please, and I'll turn it over to Asia.
Thank you. So in our recommendations, we've included a variety of ways to provide emergency financial assistance and or one-time cash assistance to survivors and victims of violence. An example of the type of program that could be expanded or funded is a current city-funded program called Bridge to Safety. This enables folks to get one-time financial assistance to get to safety. We suggest broadening that in a variety of ways detailed in our recommendations, including adding healing services to the list of things that folks could utilize these funds for. We recommend directing city funds to at least five additional community-based partners who would be able to distribute them flexibly without requiring involvement in the criminal legal system. And our recommendation is that a minimum of $75,000 per site per year is provided, as well as the additional funds needed to administer such a program. And then we also would like to see our city tap into existing relationships to help with transportation for survivors. So throughout our recommendations, where we have funded partners, we also recommend that they could get free or deeply reduced metro passes for distribution to those they're working with. Next slide, please.
You're at five minutes. Thank you so much for speaking slowly for our interpreters.
Okay. I'm going to go quickly because I know we need to get to some of the other recommendations. We recommend $500,000 per year for subsidized programs to incentivize landlords, particularly to rent at reduced and stabilized rates for low-income trans people of color, to fund a community housing trust to the amount of $600,000 per year, and to diversify and increase survivor housing support to $15 million per year. Next slide, please. We also would recommend investing in prevention programs that are placed based in community-led, including in schools and other areas. Next slide, please.
So these next recommendations are really within the city. So one recommendation is to expand a current program that is ran through victim services so that more types of victims have access to culturally resonant healing modalities. Right now, Victim Services has an EMDR training program that trains therapists to be able to provide crisis therapeutic services. So we recommend expanding that to 360,000 so that survivors can have free access to those different healing modalities. Next slide. And we mentioned expanding safety to sex workers to real policy changes within APD and also advocacy through Travis County. They center around, of course, decriminalizing sex work, but leading to that, and stop arresting individuals for prostitution and solicitation, and reducing, and releasing those currently held on those charges, advocating to end Benex courts, and instead really recommending them to community-based services that meet their needs, and then, of course, stopping prosecution of minor crimes. Next slide, please. We also acknowledge the importance that victims be able to report to the Office of Police Oversight when there are issues within policing, and it's important that the Office of Police Oversight is independent, is not administered by APD, or has a different structure of authority. So we support an independent police oversight to meet the needs of victims of violence. Next slide, please. Mandated reporting. We understand that APD's policies on mandated reporting direct young people and people in these communities into DPS. So I think it's important that victim services and the Equity Office review and reshape these policies of mandatory reporting, because these practices disproportionately impact survivors of the domestic and sexual violence and families of communities of color. So that's, again, another internal policy change that we recommend. Next slide.
We also have a series of recommendations about what a fully-funded and staffed Office of Violence Prevention could do to sustain the work of the RPS Task Force. The OVP was recommended by the Gun Violence Task Force, and similar offices in cities across the country have shown results in both the immediate reduction of gun violence, as well as leadership in building out a public health framework to sustain those efforts over the long haul. We have some specifics here that I won't read through for time. Next slide, please. So this model of a public health approach to violence, backed by the CDC and embraced by cities across the country, provides a clear framework how to operationalize the core values of the Reimagining Public Safety Task Force with racial justice at the core of how the whole model is implemented. And our work groups strongly recommends that Austin, in doing any violence prevention work, take a coordinated public health approach. We know that conversations can't be siloed, and we do want to say that any city effort of violence prevention has to occur in coordination with public health professionals using a public health approach, and we strongly feel that it undermines the potential for real violence reduction when we invest in enforcement as prevention, or when we task or allow law- we invest in enforcement as prevention or when we task or allow law enforcement to come up with what they call prevention strategies without being mindful of evidence-based public health approaches that are developed and implemented by public health professionals and affected community members. Next slide, please.
That's your time. You could finish in the next minute.
Great. These are just further OVP funding recommendations. Again, some specifics that you can look over. Next slide, please, for Amanda.
Thank you. I will just say I know that these are very important to the city. So I will let you look at the recommendations we've shared, but we would like to add that as we've laid out through the presentation, there are many victims and survivors who are not going to access support through law enforcement. And as it stands within APD, Victim Services provides vital services to survivors. We don't recommend physically decoupling Victim Services from APD. Our full recommendations include conditions that need to be met in order for there to be an administrative decoupling from APD so that survivors have access to the support they need when they do engage with law enforcement. Until APD is culturally transformed, we recommend that the steps we've outlined in this PowerPoint are made to enhance Victim Services' ability to do their work. They're outlined here. The Victim Service Manager should report to the Assistant City Manager or to the Police Chief. We recommend that their budget reflect the value they add to the department that they're able to coordinate for outside TA. Next slide, please, very quickly. That APD should move to a model where each sexual assault survivor has the option to speak to a patrol officer, a Victim Service Counselor, or both, with the Counselor being the first point of contact, and that Victim Services be able to collaborate with the Equity Office to see through the recommendations put forth during their equity assessment series.
Thank you. That concludes the recommendations by our working group, and we look forward to any further questions or engagement on these recommendations.
Thank you so much, Amanda, Aja, and Jen. Now, the Equity Reinvestment Working Group will present. Paula Rojas will lead.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure my co-presenters, Raúl Álvarez and Monica Guzmán, are in the room. Sorry to take them. Raúl Álvarez and Monica Guzmán. They might still be in the green room.
While we wait for them, Paula, I will remind you, I'm going to give you a five-minute heads-up. And also, as much as possible, slow down for our interpreters. Thank you so much.
I see Monica, and we still need Raúl Álvarez in the presenter room so that I can start. Sorry to take time. I'm going to pass it to him after like a minute. I think they're moving people over right now. Okay, I see Raúl. Yes, this is the Equity Reinvestment and Community Working Group proposal, and the goal of our working group was to identify and create upstream mechanisms that prevent the need for policing and invest in impacted communities to address longstanding inequities. I just want to say the working group members we had, myself and Monica Guzmán are on the task force, and then we had a number of amazing community members, Raúl Álvarez, Nika Arnold, Andrea Black, Elias Cortés, Ricardo Garay, Amy Midori, Jasmine Patel, Marisa Perales, and Rocío Villalobos. A little background, yes, are you asking me to pause?
Just for a moment, there's a slide up for patrol and surveillance. That's not your working group, is that correct?
It is not.
And y'all will just be presenting without a...
We don't have a PowerPoint. We just have a short little presentation.
So if we could have that removed, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Rosana. So as I was saying, those are our working group members. A little background, criminality stems from systemic failures to support community well-being in a universal and non-discriminatory way, and we recognize that violence occurs not only interpersonally but also from structural oppression, as we heard in the past presentation, from neglect, as we have all observed during the global pandemic, the recent winter storm, and I would say in some of the city's lack of adequate responses when needed, such as low-cost housing. We are calling for the city to halt investment in the violent and oppressive practices of policing and to really pivot dedicated resources to reimagine services designed to meet the needs of our communities. If we ground ourselves in the history of policing in the United States and in Austin as we did when we launched our task force, we can better understand the historic role of law enforcement as a mechanism to protect property and wealth through the use of violence. The U.S. became the wealthiest country in the world via intentional policies and practices of exploitation and genocide. The current racial wealth divide that we have in our country and in our city is not by accident. The system of racial capitalism has centered and cemented a racial hierarchy in all markers of life, with white residents at the top and black communities at the bottom and other communities of color in between. Today in Austin, black and brown communities have the highest rates of poverty, unemployment, housing insecurity, and other markers. Related historical practices such as redlining and housing discrimination have resulted in geographic concentrations of poverty, and these are disproportionately communities of color in Austin. Therefore, our recommendations focus on these geographic communities. Raúl, I will pass you the mic.
All right. Can you hear me okay? Yeah. Great. Well, thank you, Paula, and thank you, Mayor, Council, and City Manager, and our fellow work group members and the task force for their dedicated commitment. It's a lot of work, but it's very important. And just to kind of build on what Paula was sharing, you know, I think our approach, you know, can be sort of simply defined as a neighborhood hub model, right? There's a lot of information in our proposal, but it's a very simple concept, right, that we have this neighborhood hub model. It's a place-based approach, you know, let's have a presence on the ground in these areas that have issues with crime and policing, but also maybe under-resourced and have high needs, you know, of other types. Before the pandemic, we already knew where the under-resourced communities were located, right? Data documenting the impact of the pandemic and the winter storm just confirmed what we already know, you know, what are the areas of high need. So we do ask if you do what the data is telling you, right? The data is speaking very loudly right now. It's very clear, you know, we don't want to overthink it because of this looming housing evictions crisis. I think we need to get into these neighborhoods as quickly as possible to provide support. Neighborhoods like Runburg and Dove Springs and Montopolas, Del Valley and Colony Park will be adversely affected by the evictions crisis if we don't change our approach. So let's put our resources on the ground where we know that they're most needed.
Our approach is... Could you please slow down a little bit?
Oh, yes, of course.
For our interpreters.
Yeah, I'm so used to that.
Yeah, and I'm going to encourage you to also just clip your words a little bit so that it's very clear because the audio is a little garbled.
Okay. No problem. Sorry about that. I'm used to having just the two minutes, not the, not three or four minutes. So again, in our proposal, the approach is just as critical, right, as the funding ask. You know, last June, you know, the data was clear about the ZIP codes where the COVID hotspots were. You know, if you look at the map back in June, it looks an awful lot like the map of COVID cases and hotspots today. So if we would have established COVID resource centers in those areas, how much easier would PPE distribution have been? How much easier would testing have been? How much easier would vaccine distribution have been? How much easier would the winter storm response have been if there was already a trusted place where community members could have gone for help? Stakes are high right now, and they're too high to stay the course. So we must change our approach to, if we want a different outcome in these particular neighborhoods. And now to our proposal. There are two main parts, the immediate investment from current-year budget and annual recurring allocations. In terms of the immediate investments, our work group asks for an investment of $11 million from the current fiscal year budget to be used to address the needs in ten neighborhoods that may be experiencing, again, high needs for supports. We suggest a variety of data sources that may be used to select neighborhoods, looking at factors such as concentrated poverty, high unemployment, limited access to health insurance, COVID cases, or high concentrations of COVID cases, and calls to 211, you know, a good source of where the need is. And of the $11 million that we ask for for the current-year budget, a million is for establishment of neighborhood and community partnerships in these selected neighborhoods, and the remaining $10 million would be divided between the 10 neighborhoods selected to provide rent assistance, preventing evictions, as well as providing direct assistance to residents for their basic needs. So that's the current-year ask. We don't want to wait till October 1, right, to get moving. The second ask is for recurring annual investment to support establishment and operation of five neighborhood hubs. So that would total about $45 million for those hubs, about $9 million per year per hub. And there's three kind of big bullets or arenas for investments. The first is overseeing the implementation and distribution of a guaranteed income pilot for residents in the hub's jurisdiction in the form of direct recurring cash payment. So that's about $12 million. And there's the details for our proposal are in the actual document. The other big bucket of supports for each neighborhood hub is to invest like $6.5 million roughly per hub and to work with residents to identify the long-term needs of their communities and to prioritize how those funds are going to be used. So we feel it's very important that the community voice play a meaningful role in the identification of priorities at each hub. And then finally, you know, once established, you know, these neighborhood hubs, we assess what existing resources and programs may be effectively delivered via the neighborhood hubs. And again, that's another role for these community resources once established. And I think, I don't know if I'm out of time, but I was supposed to leave time for Monica.
Three more minutes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yay, finally. Okay, Monica Guzmán, "Dava Go Austin, Vamos Austin," she/her/hers. And basically, the, sorry, I'm going to get myself situated on my page here. The hubs that we are proposing will be operated by community-based organization partners, and the priorities for each hub will be determined through engagement of community members in targeted neighborhoods. Really all I have in my part.
Thank you, Monica, and thank you, Raúl. I think we're going to hopefully give back some time. The last little piece I would add is that the guaranteed income pilot that we're suggesting as one of the core programs in the neighborhood hubs is something that we know is being experimented with all around the country, and there's great successes. We know the city of Austin has been a part of a learning, national learning community around it, and we know from experience that right now, families are needing support for rent, for food, for utilities, for many different areas, and having people jump through five different programs hoops with lots of applications that they can't get through is not working. So we need a streamlined, simple way to get direct assistance, economic assistance to families in need right now. And we think that the guaranteed income pilot is a way that we can try that in Austin successfully and then hopefully grow it. Thank you. Thank you, Raúl and Monica, in particular.
And we can't, we can't hear Rosana, she was speaking.
I was also thanking Raúl and Monica and calling the next working group, which is Reimagining 911 and Non-Policis Crisis Response, Rodney Sines and Ms. Sue Gabriel. Do we have our presenters?
This is Davy Tech. Give me one minute.
We can come back to this working group if there are any technical challenges and move to the patrol and surveillance group?
Just I brought me answer, so.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rodney Sines. I'm not sure if I'm audible yet.
I'm going to give you your five-minute warning when you have five minutes left and remind you to please speak slowly for our interpreters.
Okay. Thank you for the reminder. I have, I was supposed to wait for Ms. Sue, but I'll begin as I don't want to take up too much of our time. We are the Reimagining 911 Work Group, consisting of myself, Ms. Sue, and David, and Kate from our other groups as well, which we'll be presenting today. This is the, we don't have a presentation for our, for this particular part, but I will begin now. We understand that the decoupling of 911 from the Austin Police Department is currently underway. Although the work group has not been included in the city's efforts toward this goal, we strongly support this decoupling. These recommendations are rooted in the values of the RPS Task Force. Grounded in the historical context of policing in the U.S. and in Austin, the Reimagining 911 and Non-Police Crisis Response Work Group, hereafter the 911 Work Group, acknowledges that holistic community safety is distinct from policing and should be defined by directly impacted communities. As such, our recommendations include divesting from systems that cause harm, developing or supporting existing crisis response networks that are truly accessible to all community members and that arise from and center the most directly harmed by existing system. Our recommendations also support sustainability and long-term thinking in suggesting full and permanent funding for equitable crisis response networks and planning for long-term accountability to the community. The Reimagining 911 and Non-Police Crisis Response Work Group, made up of representatives from affected communities and concerned community members, presents recommendations centering on the following. Number one, establish a fully funded mental health first response and remove any structural barriers that prevent community access to mental health first response. barriers that prevent community access to mental health first response, independent from police. For instance, when people call 911, they should be and are now given the following options: EMS, fire, mental health, or police. However, non-police mental health first response is currently only available in limited situations. A determination of the appropriateness of police intervention should be made by the community member requesting assistance, assistance in conjunction with the mental health first responder, responder, not by the dispatcher. Mental health first response teams must be able to respond to mental health crisis, crises without police and use police backup as a last resort. Response teams would consist of a medic and a crisis worker and peer community, a, a peer community health worker. The team must be equipped to respond during crisis moments, including COVID-19 and severe weather. The team should be provided with all necessary appropriate equipment. Excuse me, 911 operators and first responders should receive appropriate training with an emphasis on prioritizing the response, the response to, and need for mental health services over responding to nonviolent criminal behavior. So in order to ensure that when someone asks for the. Hi, Ms. Sue. Uh, I'll stop for you, I'll stop after this recommendation, you can continue with number three. 911 operators and first responders should receive appropriate training with an emphasis on prioritizing the response to and need for mental health services over responding to nonviolent criminal behavior. In order to ensure that when someone asks for mental health options, they get a mental health clinician, training for 911 call operators must go beyond mental health first aid. So all call takers must undergo training on anti-racism that includes examples of racism in a 911 call center and regular anti-racism supervision. This is to combat systemic racism and ensure to the best of our ability that call takers do not make fatal decisions based on racist ideas of danger. Ms. Sue, please feel free to continue number three on, if you're ready.
You can go on, I'll get to the, uh, the next working group.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Sue. Number three. Non-police crisis line and community response teams should receive $2 million. The city should fund a community non-police first response outside of the 911 system. This service should also include a community-led resource line and respond to situations that do not appear to require a mental health response. For instance, loud music, blocked driveways, et cetera. Police should not be the entity to respond to noncriminal quality of life complaint or to other situations that have been decriminalized already in this community. Currently, this service exists in Austin through 10,000 fearless first responders, a local, uh, group, and we recommend that the city should fully resource this group and others like it. Excuse me, such as MH First in Oakland, California, and allow them to be self-sufficient, autonomous, and to be sustained. Moving forward, funds for the creation of this will come from the Reimagined Public Safety Fund. This initiative would be in addition to non-police mental health first response through 911. In addition, we also recommend culturally and linguistically appropriate communication in emergency response options. We must ensure language access for residents with limited English proficiency in all emergency response call centers. So we should establish a standardized language access procedure used by all emergency response for callers with limited English proficiency. People, excuse me, provide culturally and linguistically appropriate outreach and education to ensure the community understands the process and how to use the services. Call takers must undergo community-based cultural competency training and regular refresher training for working with communities with limited English proficiency. Text messaging should also be added as an option for accessing emergency response. The city should undertake a multilingual public education campaign to raise awareness regarding appropriate emergency service use. Finally, ongoing community account, accountability and evaluation. Apologies for not naming the recommendations as I've gone. This is number six. The city of Austin should conduct a regular and ongoing independent audit, annual, biannual, et cetera, of emergency response calls and a linguistically and culturally accessible community survey requesting residents' opinions regarding the effectiveness on, of emergency police calls, response calls, excuse me. Number seven, in order to engender community trust in the city's reimagining public safety process, the city should, A, not return any of the reimagining or decoupling funds to APD, B, follow the task force's recommendation and not fund an APD cadet class, and C, invest the full amount of the reimagining city funds toward holistic community safety recommendations of the task force working groups in this year's budget. Only with these displays of commitment by the city do we recommend a second phase of reimagining public safety that allows for transparent and thoughtful community input in creating a reimagining public safety plan that leads to effective results for systemic change. Finally, additional recommendation, number eight, the city must invest in and expand community leadership development to guide public safety initiatives. In order to ensure that the communities most impacted by the systems and ideologies of oppression are able to offer their expertise, the city must commit to investing in community leaders. And finally, number nine, recommendation nine, the city should budget a role for the Equity Office in assessing plans for and implementation of non-police crisis responses. Our conclusion, the work group's conclusion, was that for far too many Austinites, calling for help requires weighing whether making the call will ultimately do more harm than good. True public safety means investing in responses that don't put residents at risk. The reimagining public, if, public safety process is an opportunity to create systems of care during emergency and crisis situations that provide help without requiring community members to risk their lives or their freedom. Thank you very much. Uh, I think hopefully we, we met the timeline.
So, yes, thank you so much, Rodney, and thanks to Ms. Sue Gabriel and the entire, uh, working group. We are supposed to move on to the patrol and surveillance working group. However, I don't see David Johnson's name in the participant list. Okay, I see it now. Welcome, David. Is it possible, um, for us to have David on camera?
This is Davy Tech. If David is presenting, then yes, I can, I can have him on the screen.
Thank you. David is presenting, I believe, and there is a PowerPoint presentation for patrol and surveillance. Excellent.
I'm Sue Gabriel, can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Sue. Are you presenting for patrol and surveillance?
The first part of it, yes.
Excellent, thank you so much. Just a gentle reminder to please speak slowly for our interpreters. When you have five minutes left, I will on camera and off mute to remind you.
Thank you. I'm Sue Gabriel, Bethany Carson, Rodney Sines, David and I are part of this group. Yeah, second slide, please. Police do not equate to public safety. Police do not and cannot prevent crime from happening. Police spend less ti, less than 1% of their time responding to calls about violent crime. Often, they, there is little that they can do when they do arrive. Slide two.
Excuse me, Ms. Sue. Excuse me, everyone.
Yes.
It's, it's still on the cover slide. And, um, and also, Bethany Carson and Rodney Sines are both also participating in the presentation, so they need to be allowed in as participants.
I'm good, I think I'm ready to, to go.
Bethany on the call as well?
This is Davy Tech, I understand Bethany Carson was calling in, so I cannot move her onto the screen, but she is unmuted right now and available for communication.
Okay, thank you. And, and thank, uh, thank you, everyone. I just want to ask, is Tech ready to advance slides?
So. Start over.
Ms. Sue, you can go to the second, read from the second slide, police, police do not equal safety.
Okay. Patrol policing emerged out of a need. Oh, the second slide, police do not equate, do not equate to public safety. Police do not and cannot prevent crime from happening. Police spend less than 1% of their time responding to calls about violent crime. Often, there is little they can do when they do arrive. Uh, um, third slide. Patrol policing emerged out of a need to surveil and exercise control over black and brown and poor communities through threat of violence. Next slide. The function of police has not changed. From 2015 to 2021, police have killed at least 35 people. Four more have died in police custody, but APD claimed they were suicide or accidental. Next slide. The George, the, the, uh, Joyce James Report states, residents of Austin neighborhoods with higher percentages of African-American and Hispanic residents, those in poverty and neighborhoods with high crime rates, had disproportionate force and severity of, of force used upon them. Later also shows that black and Hispanic men were arrested disproportionately. Next slide. These next three sta, slides provide maps of Austin that illustrate the disproportionate use of police patrol and surveillance against people in Austin. The first map plots all, all arrests in the yellow points. We can easily see that arrests in neighborhoods of color predominantly along the Austin Eastern Crescent are more dispersed than in white neighborhoods. This tells you that APD is actually policing with intensity, with more intensity than just major roads and intersections. Next slide. In the second map, we see the occurrences of probable, probable car searches plotted in orange. A probable car search is an extremely subjective and often abused practice by, by officers that can lead to criminal paroling. Here, you see a greater concentration within the Eastern Crescent than before. 77.1% of all probable car searches have been black and Hispanic people. Next slide. Finally, in the last map, we see drug arrests. Here again, we see an even greater concentration of harm in predominantly black and brown Eastern Crescent of Austin. The next slide, this will be done by Bethany Carson.
Hi, thank you, Ms. Sue, this is Bethany, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So our focus for our community engagement and recommendations were areas of policing where APD comes most directly and frequently in contact with people or information about them without being called. In addition to the at-large task force community engagement session, our working group met with 40 people directly impacted by incarceration, deportation, or immigration enforcement to hear about what safety means to them and their experiences with police. We collected 39 surveys, which were disseminated by word of mouth to people directly impacted and their immediate community. Next slide, please. Here are the survey findings. Next slide. We asked people what is one thing that council could fund or defund that would make them feel safer. No one said to fund more police. In fact, the majority said to defund police or specific aspects of policing, and many mentioned funding for mental and behavioral health, affordable housing, and homelessness. Far from feeling protected by police, our respondents felt fear at seeing the police. This was particularly acute while driving. Next slide, please. The vast majority of those who took our survey had been stopped by the police, most while driving. These encounters were overwhelmingly negative, and many reported that the stops led to financial struggles and negative mental health impact. Some encounters led to more acute impacts such as incarceration or detention, job loss, family separation, and deportation. Next slide, please. When we look at the impacts of police stops at a community level, those acute, life-changing impacts are amplified. Nearly everyone who took our survey had family members, friends, and loved ones who had been stopped by the police. More than a third were arrested, and almost a third of the stops led to incarceration or detention. A quarter lost their jobs. About a fifth of the stops led to deportation or family separation. At the same time as our.
If you could just slow down a bit for our interpreters, please?
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
At the same time as our respondents experienced these harmful impacts from unwanted interactions with police, they could not rely on police in a crisis. More than half said that either they hadn't or wouldn't call 911 in an emergency because of their fear that police interaction would be more harmful to themselves or others, or they had called in an emergency and no one ever responded. Many respondents shared personal experience or commentary about how police response had worsened or escalated a situation. Next slide, please. We asked our respondents how they felt about police sharing data with other local and federal law enforcement agencies, such as through the ARIK Fusion Center. The most common reactions were fear, anger, and disgust. Fear was particularly acute among Spanish-speaking, predominantly immigrant respondents. Slide, please. Nearly all of our respondents have interacted with the police, many both as people seeking help and as objects of suspicion, and it hasn't made them feel safer. Police aren't able to provide the responses that make them and their communities feel safe. Furthermore, police stops cause harm. They exacerbate many of the issues that most threaten community safety, including mental health struggles, financial stability, incarceration, deportation, and family separation. Next slide, please. And here I'll pass it on to Rodney.
Thank you. Um, our takeaways from our communication with the community were that nearly all of our respondents have interacted with the police, both as people seeking help and as objects of suspicion, and it hasn't made them feel safer. Police aren't actually able to provide the responses that people need to feel safe. Police stops exacerbate many of the issues that most threaten deep community's safety, including mental health struggles, financial stability, incarceration.
I'm sorry to interrupt you just for, for your information, Bethany covered those slides, and we're on the long-term vision and recommendations.
I'm so sorry, thank you so much.
Totally okay, I understand, thank you.
Our, our long-term vision and recommendations, mainly, we want to divest from the entire racist, classist model of patrol policing. So phase out the entire 210,604,299 neighborhood-based policing line item. So phase out the entire 210,604,299 neighborhood-based policing line item. And no more cadet classes. We actually need fewer officers. We also need to phase out all use of deadly weapons, and traffic enforcement should be decoupled. State-level changes now are needed to decriminalize traffic offenses and allow unarmed civil servants to direct traffic and make stops for civil traffic violations. We should instead reallocate that money to reinvest in economic, health, and housing resources that create real safety for the over-policed communities. And now I believe David will take the remaining part.
Thank you, Rodney. So our immediate recommendations start with, safety is. Safety is an end to discriminatory and dangerous patrol. We ask, through recommendation firmly as possible, that the city defund crowd management, gang suppression, nuisance abatement, Riverside to Governance projects, U.S. Marshals Lone Star Fugitive Passport, weapons and military supplies, and last but not least, training and recruitment of new cadets for a total of 12.5 million. And we ask instead that money be used to reallocate towards services that will help mitigate the impact of communities most harmed. Fund immigrant defense. Fund direct cash assistance.
David, sorry to interrupt you. You have five minutes. And they're still on the long-term slide, so if you want them to advance the slides. And if you could please slow down for our interpreters. You've got time. We're going to make it happen.
Okay. And just for record, if need be, the uprooting working group is willing to cede up to five minutes of its time for the completion of this presentation.
Thank you so much. That's really appreciated.
Thank you. Could we advance a slide, please? Thanks. Immediate recommendations. Thank you. So safety is an end to discriminatory and dangerous patrol. So we ask to defund all of those things on the left and to fund the things on the right. So defund crowd management, gang suppression, nuisance abatement, Riverside to Governance project, U.S. Marshals Lone Star Fugitive Passport, weapons and military supplies, and training and recruitment of new cadets for a total of 12.5 million, or approximately. And fund immigrant defense through the Public Defender's Office. Fund direct cash assistance for over-policed communities. And fund health, supportive health services. Disarm traffic patrol that cannot be immediately decoupled. So if it can't immediately be decoupled, then at least it's on it. Next slide, please. Safety is being able to live and exist peacefully in your neighborhood. Social and recreational space without constant police presence and harassment. Defund overtime, park pool, mounted patrol, specialized patrol. Approximately 10% of, quote, neighborhood policing patrol. Motor. That'll bring a total to approximately $35.3 million just there. And we ask that you decouple traffic enforcement units that do not involve directing traffic, conducting traffic, stops, or filing criminal charges. So that's traffic administration, AV wrecker, highway enforcement, commercial vehicle unit, and vehicle abatement. And also special event, late patrol, and house. That'd be a total of $10 million if you could decouple them, and you can. But we want you to end investigative discretionary stops and officer-initiated calls. In Fayetteville, North Carolina, when they deprioritize all violations other than speeding, DWI, running stop signs, or lights, or other unsafe movement, right? They had a 50% decline in the number of black drivers searched. So there are clear numbers to support why something like that should be implemented. Next slide, please. Safety is freedom of speech and movement without surveillance. Defund ARIK, Austin Regional Intelligence. Defund Real-Time Crime Center, HALA. Defund the Star Chase Pursuit Management Technology Solution. That would total $4.5 million approximately. And we ask that you provide transparency about the use, technical capabilities, function, and location of all APD drones, including the 13 donated by Greater Austin Crime Commission. Immediately CCU these drones or any of the video surveillance and delete any footage from law enforcement database. Ban the use of facial recognition software, such as, and not limited to, ClearView AI by any APD officer or city employee. Next slide, please.
Please slow down, David. Thanks.
Okay. Safety is ending the one drug and treating drug use as a public health issue. I think I got it now. Defund the K-9 unit. Fund K-9 interdiction. Defund narcotics conspiracy. For a total of $10.4 million approximately. And instead, fund behavioral health and low-income and supportive housing. Next slide, please. Safety is an end to manipulative and self-promoting police interactions with the community. When police are paid to hand out food and toys and have dialogue in under-resourced communities while continuing to harass, injure, and kill members of those same communities, that is manipulation, not relationship building. It is APD's responsibility to stop the harm, not the community's responsibility to trust or forgive while harm continues to occur.
Excuse me, David. Sorry to-
District representatives. That would give us about 3.2 million. And instead, fund community-based initiatives that prevent and address violence. Next slide, please.
So David, can you hear me?
Yep.
Your audio is a little low, so please get closer to your microphone.
Okay, thank you.
You're at time, so can you wrap in the next minute?
Um, yes, I can. Absolutely. I'm on my next to last slide. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
So safety is equity and accountability. Contracting out of APD control. Create a mandatory equity screening process for all APD contracts and grants so that all contracts over $5,000 are reviewed by the Equity Office through the process that you'll hear later in the Uprooting Punitive and Harmful Cultures Working Group. Before APD is able to enter into a competitive bidding process to solicit the product or service or submit a grant proposal, such as the one approved recently for less-than-lethal weapon. Any proposed spending, including grant funding or donations for previously unallocated items, should require Equity Office approval and then come before council for a vote before putting money, pulling money from outside of the department. Last slide, please. Or next slide, please. So when all is said and done, we have approximately $66 million that we can defund and reallocate, and approximately $10 million that we can loosen through decoupling. Thank you very much. Time.
Thank you so much, David. We're going to hear next from the Meaningful Community Engagement Working Group. We're inviting Monica Guzman back and Alicia Torres.
Monica Guzman, I'm here.
Thank you, Monica. I will again remind you to please speak slowly for our interpreters. When you have five minutes left in your time, I will come on with a gentle reminder.
Is Alicia on?
This is the AV tech. I see Alicia Torres. I can unmute her, but I cannot add to the screen.
And Monica, are you able to turn on-
Can you all hear me?
Yes, Alicia. We can hear you.
Okay, I can, I can go ahead and start. I don't know if we want to wait for Tech to figure out the video part?
Please go ahead and start. And I- I'm not sure where, who is unmuted, where that is still coming up that-
Yes, this is the AV tech. If you're not speaking, please keep yourself unmuted so we can eliminate all those noises. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you able to get Monica and Alicia's video up?
I can't do anything about Alicia Torres' video on this, and I apologize about that.
Someone is unmuted. I'm trying to see who that might be. Go ahead, Alicia.
Okay, I'm unmuted, and if the video comes up, I would have loved to, for folks to be able to see my face, but it's okay. I will go ahead and start. Okay, please. Hello, council and the rest of the community. My name is Alicia Torres. I am a member of Eyes Fuera de Austin and a member of the Meaningful Community Engagement Work Group. I use she/her, ella pronouns. We formed this group, this work group, under the Reimagine Public Safety Task Force because we can't and must not reimagine alone. There are hundreds of thousands of people that are not able to partake in these conversations, much less city-wide decision-making, because it is inaccessible and doesn't allow for the community to be heard. Our group focused specifically on city council meetings because unfortunately, it is one of the very few opportunities that regular people, like me and many others, have to engage with you and decision-making. Because it is one of the very few things that we have, that we have that is actually meant for community engagement. We know that these meetings are inaccessible for members who are most impacted by decisions the city makes around public safety, EI, are undocumented, are undocumented, people experiencing homelessness, folks who are disabled, LGBTQIA, low-income, and/or BIPOC community. People who are not represented in the city council and are purposely disregarded. The Meaningful Community Engagement Work Group gathered testimony for the most directly impacted community members on their experiences and trying to engage with the city council and influence decision-making. Resident feedback was gathered through public virtual listening sessions, as well as a set of online surveys. From this information, we have determined that the main areas of focus for the city council to actually start creating a space where regular people can participate and be heard are, one, targeted community outreach, actual community engagement, accessibility in the sense of language, time, location, technology, and investment. Monica will, in a minute, Monica will take a more in-depth, will talk, I'm sorry, will talk more in-depth about our community-centered recommendations that are essential for city council to implement. Monica, before you start, I definitely want to honor the name of, I want to honor the work that the other folks that were part of the community, of the Meaningful Community Engagement Work Group were by naming them. So members of our working group included I, myself, Alicia Torres, Rebecca Sanchez, Monica Guzman, Temi Oluyobi, Doris Adams, and Lucy Nguyen, and to a certain extent, Carrie Roberts.
Thank you, Alicia. Monica Guzman, Dava Go Austin, Vamos Austin, she/her, hers. Our first recommendation, prioritize community access to decision-making in city council meetings that is both transparent and culturally responsible with a diversity of cultures, accessibilities, and languages of constituents. Utilize paid media, from community newspapers to television and radio, bus wrappers, bus stops, to social media, and everything in between. When you report back on community actions, I have noticed not every council meeting has and speaks for- Sorry, I didn't see that. The actions taken by city council is linked on the April 8th meeting, but not either March meeting. What we are asking is that make that a regular occurrence, but also include votes. How each council member voted, the public response, commentary. In other words, how many people registered and spoke in favor of or opposition to items. Vote reports shall be written in accessible language describing what the vote means, so it's easier to read and understand. Revise the City of Austin website. Let's help. They could ensure it is professionally translated, much easier to navigate, and more user-friendly. Google Translate is not the best option.
Interrupting, Monica. If I could ask our host to mute? It's creating a little bit of an audio problem, and we're having a hard time hearing you, Monica. And if you could be a little bit closer to your mic, if possible. Your audio is a little low, and we also need the host to mute themselves. And always a reminder to slow down for our interpreters. AV, everyone, can you hear me? Because we're getting a lot of audio from you.
Yes, it's actually Alicia Torres is not muted, and her audio is causing the feedback.
Thank you so much. Go ahead, Monica.
Okay, thank you. I'm on my phone fairly close to my face, but I will try to slow down. Do I need to repeat anything or just continue?
Please continue.
Second recommendation, make city council meeting processes more accessible to community members to participate in while centering the voices and experiences of those most directly impacted. Implement a tier system that allows people who are the most impacted by upcoming council decisions to share testimony first. Work with the community-based organizations and the Equity Office to identify relevant tiers or the particular discussions being considered. Excuse me. Significantly improve the current translation and interpretation service system by offering a larger variety of languages spoken by our community members in real time during council meetings and make the audio recordings available for community members to visit at any time. Make speaker registration and speaker waiting processes more efficient and accessible for virtual or in-person council meetings, including allowing registered speakers to testify in whichever format they choose, including submitting video, audio, voicemails, and written testimony to be played during the meeting and simultaneously interpreted on the spot. Reducing dial-in waiting time by allowing registered speakers to leave voicemails for virtual meetings. Creating a system that allows community members to dial into community council meetings at any time. Eliminate the rule of people having to pre-register to speak. Council meetings should be open for everyone to participate in at all times. Eliminate the rule of people that will need translation having to request interpretation and registration two days before everyone else. Recommendation three. Require city council members to develop a robust community engagement strategy to actively engage and center community members in their district most impacted by council decisions. Have at least one community listening session and feedback session and one Q and A available in multiple languages and accessible formats on items they are sponsoring or cosponsoring for each meeting. sponsoring or cosponsoring for each meeting. Publicly identify actual connections that were made with community organizations or groups to solicit input and expertise from the community. Invest in community-based organizations who have relationships with people most impacted by decisions and create a rich, two-way communication to ensure you make constituent-informed decisions. Invest in and engage with existing community centers and neighborhood hubs proposed by other task force workgroups. Recommendation four: immediately, immediately invest $5 million for the Communications and Public Information Office budget to cover translation and interpretation services, as well as every, every city department must include a base budget line item for community engagement. Flexible funds to pay partners, community organizations for the following. This list is not limited list. Translation and interpretation services, childcare, venue support, remote access support, requesting community organizations to provide facilitation, community persons who can provide any previously named services, stipends for residents with lived experience to support the previous listed. Again, that is not a finite list. There is more to add. Engage community partners, organizations who are already engaged with and center residents. And finally, add $250,000 annually to the base budget of the Equity Office for two new staff members. That covers salary and benefits for two full-time employees.
In closing-
Thanks, Monica. We have just under five minutes.
Will be done before that.
Great, thank you.
In closing, the recommendations that Monica shared with us are tied to the Reimagine Public Safety Task Force guiding values, which we, not only as task force representatives, but also as constituents and community members firmly maintain must be at the center of all City of Austin operations. These recommendations were created intentionally and in direct collaboration with the community. Folks took time for this because they want, they really want to engage and know and understand what is happening in their own home. The only way to honor these folks and their time is for council to publicly commit to implementing these recommendations, ensuring in that way that everyone is actually, that everyone actually has a voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica and Alicia. We're going to hear next from the Patrol and Criminal Investigations Group, Working Group, which will be led by Kathy Mitchell. I want to also just recognize that many across the country, including in Austin, are awaiting the verdict on the Chauvin trial. And it just encourages me to really acknowledge the stakes at which we're considering here and wanting to honor the, every time a trial like this comes up, every time there's an event like this, the families who are impacted by these losses are the ones who are feeling this brunt. I just want to make space to hold them in our thoughts in this moment. And Brian, obviously, if there's anything you or Paolo want to share, um, between now and when the announcement is made, I will certainly recognize y'all. Kathy, are you available? Are you queued up?
Slides, we just had our recommendations.
Sorry, I missed the first part of your-
Okay.
So I will give you- There's a little bit of an echo, but I will give you, and just a reminder to speak slowly.
This is the AV tech. I believe someone has more than one media device open. If you can mute one of them, and we'll see if that helps. Thank you.
Kathy, I think you might have both of them muted. Is there a way for you to unmute one of them?
All right, can you hear me now?
Kathy Mitchell, are you called in as well?
Can you hear me now?
Something worked. Whatever you did, it worked. Thank you.
I am so sorry.
And I wait on a presentation. I didn't hear that part.
This is, I am here representing the Patrol and Criminal Investigations Work Group. Our members were Carrie Roberts, myself, Sue Gabriel, Jessica Johnson, Nick Hudson, Chaz Moore, and Amanda Lewis. Uh, I am not going to be taking our full time. We have relatively few recommendations I do want to start with, and they're, you know, very common sense. We were focused on kind of structures within APD to serve different kinds of services to people. So our first recommendation is that the Lake Patrol should be handled as an EMS function. We believe, and we've learned that there are overlapping police jurisdictions on the lake in addition to APD. APD has been the primary, but the duties that APD mostly addresses have to do with things like picking up fatigued swimmers, helping stranded boaters, supporting APD's dive team in search and rescue, which is occasional work, and certainly they can be brought in to do that as needed. But, but the most common kind of complaints involve getting EMS to the scene, and right now EMS is too far away. So we believe that in a, in an area where it's largely about water safety and health, it's important to be able to get our emergency health providers to the scene quickly when needed. And so we would support reallocating the resources that are currently used for APD Lake Patrol to EMS to the tune of about $1.4 million. That would allow us to add five EMS FTEs along with the purchase of, of ambulance boats capable of providing advanced life support care. We believe as a second recommendation that we need to discontinue our current police dog unit because the dogs have all been trained to bite people. We did look at a considerable amount of data on dog bite incidents involving APD and determined that dogs not only have a negative history that's always front and center when a dog bite is occurring, the history of the use of police dogs with respect to Black and Brown people is always in the foreground of our thinking. But also, these dog bite incidents were often the kind of things that could be avoided. The dogs are all trained to bite people. We believe there are police uses for dogs, but we would need a different kind of dog unit and a different kind of expectation for those animals. Our third recommendation, the police horse unit, the mounted unit should be discontinued. Many other cities have discontinued their mounted units, largely because mounted units in an urban area are very expensive. I want to do a quick reminder for council, although I'm sure most of you know this basic history, that voters approved the first bonds that were supposed to pay for a new stable back in 2006. That bond rolled into another bond that was issued in 2012. By 2020, we still didn't have a stable, and APG, APD rejected a $14.4 million bid because there wasn't enough money to pay that much for a stable. I believe we have 16 horses, and that is an exorbitant amount to spend. It's been more than a decade. We haven't been able to put together the right package of support for the horses. They're only getting more expensive over time. So on balance, we recommended that the cost, the, the cost and the outcome and the work doesn't balance out, and we should discontinue the mounted unit as so many other cities have. Like previous workgroups, we have been looking at self-initiated calls, and based on amazing data research that was supported by city staff throughout this process, we believe that self-initiated calls are another area where we are spending far too many resources with far too little to show for it. I'll just leave it at that. And finally, oh, I guess it's not finally. Number five, we recommend a community-based full curriculum review of the Cadet Academy. This has been discussed. This won't be the first time that you're hearing this, but there have been a number of indications in the most recent round of reports from Kroll and others that APD has, over the past few years, as we've tried to dig into the problems at the academy, really simply disagreed that there's anything wrong. I don't need to go through all the reports and all the outcomes, but I think that the community assessments have consistently been that there's a great deal wrong with what we have been doing at the police academy. And, and as long as there's any concern that APD leadership is not in agreement with that assessment, we need to have full participation from members of the community as the new curriculum is developed so that we get to both trust and verify that changes are being made. Finally, in the spirit of reimagining public safety, any pre-arrest diversion strategies that the city launches should not be in lieu of decriminalization that you've heard so much about in this, in the, in the other workgroup participation, excuse me, presentations. Pre-arrest diversion strategies should not create programs that rely on police discretion to either arrest and potentially, you know, put people on a path to criminalization or not. Police encounters can still escalate and cause serious harm, and we would like to see alternative strategies that do not involve police. So that's the end of our recommendations.
Thank you so much, Kathy. We are going to hear now from the Public Health Working Group, and I want to make sure that-
And now I cannot hear you.
Can everyone else hear me? I see nods. Okay. AV, if you can help. Kathy, we are also trying to have our presenter for Public Health, who I see in the participant list, Surubi Kuque.
Hi, I'm here.
Thank you. Surubi, as I've mentioned to all our presenters, I want to remind you to please speak slowly for our interpreters. You will have an allocated time, which was pre-proquested. When you're at the five-minute mark, I'll gently remind you, and we are running a little behind. Some of the groups have gone over. So as much as you're able to stick to your timeline or shorten it, I would be ever in your debt. Thank you.
Okay. I hope that you all are really able to appreciate how much heart has gone into this work. Good afternoon. My name is Surubi Kuque. I am, I have some slides that I'm waiting on. In the meantime, I'm with Communities of Color United for Racial Justice. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share the work and wisdom of the Public Health Reinvestments Work Group. This group has had a wide range of perspectives. So to begin, when we talk about reimagining public safety, we have to elevate what the community members have told us again and again. We heard it in our interviews that, for videos we did, we heard it in listening sessions, we heard it in, in the work we've been doing in community over the years, that when, when we ask them what makes them feel safe, we hear about free and affordable healthcare, free or affordable healthcare, we hear about community supports, and we hear about freedom from fear of racist policing. Next slide. Oh, before we move to the next slide, I just want to draw your attention to this enormous and amazingly brilliant group of members of this task force. I won't name, say all their names, but there they are, and they're in the report as well. Very robust community. Next slide. So this is what a public health approach can offer. In fact, a public health framework offers a kind of counterpoint to law enforcement and criminal justice. The key elements that we think about when we apply a public health approach are that the efforts are evidence-based, that they are people-centered, equity-focused, and a harm reduction approach, and that it's a trauma-informed approach. The recommendations we're putting forth today meet these criteria and are also holding our city accountable, holding you all and all of our systems accountable to look at and assess the social determinants of health, identify the disparities and the structures that are harming our, our communities, and to implement strategies that will ensure equitable access to high-quality and culturally informed healthcare. We have everything we need in the city to care for and meet the needs of its residents. We just need to invest what we have in ways that make sense, in programs that actually do that, that actually meet the needs of our communities, rather than squandering our wealth on institutions that are just designed to harm and punish. Our public health system has been undertaking a Herculean task during the COVID pandemic with a tiny fraction of the city budget, especially when compared to sister cities of comparable size. There's just no excuse for this. Investing in a public health workforce, infrastructure, and redesigning programs to address stated community needs will reduce the need for police in most arenas of life, and research shows us will improve health and safety outcomes of the most vulnerable people in our city. You'll see that the scope of our recommendations is quite large, addressing everything from healthcare access to housing to food security to harm reduction. This is because making our communities safer takes a broad and deliberate embrace of the people living in them. It means meeting people where they are with what they need when they need it. Next slide, please. To this end, one of our key recommendations is to strengthen the public health workforce in Austin by hiring community health workers to serve communities that are suffering under excessive policing. These workers come from the communities they serve. They provide home visits. They help people get connected to services that are available through the city as well as in the wider community. With adequate, with adequate training, they'll be able to offer the mental health and other crisis intervention, including de-escalation that the police force has been hopelessly inadequate in providing. These are dignified jobs with a stable income and benefits, and ultimately will offer a career path for people who care about their communities rather than entering into law enforcement. Community health workers can replace police on the streets. To make this work, the city must also invest in a networking and training hub for these kinds of workers to receive training, supervision, and support to be able to serve in a sustainable way so that they are not burdened, overburdened by the vicarious trauma of caring for so many- so that they are not burdened, overburdened by the vicarious trauma of caring for so many people. We propose a pilot program of fifty community health workers in the Eastern Crescent of Austin with a plan for evaluation of the pilot and a commitment for scaling up to a thousand community health workers throughout the city by 2025. Next slide. These community health workers will, can live and should live within a community health center. Uh, we recommend that the city opens five new community health centers in the same region, the Eastern Crescent. These centers staffed by community health workers could be built within existing recreation centers or by repurposing schools recently closed on in East Austin or along with the neighborhood hubs proposed by the Equity Reinvestments Work Group. There are many, many creative ways we can create these resources in our community. It's just a matter of making it happen and investing where it matters. This proposal has many, many components and I'll just outline a few. Firstly, a clinic onsite and telehealth preventative care, including rapid testing, triage, and referral for, by primary care docs that rotate through, um, include, or nurses, um, including, uh, medical residents, nursing students, and other healthcare providers. The community health worker can support by organizing health promotion activities, including classes for exercise, cooking, mindfulness, meditation, onsite and telehealth mental health services, including more informal wellness dialogues, workshops, and events that are friendly to people of color, communities of color, and queer and trans communities as well. The community health worker can provide linkage to community supports, domestic violence and sexual assault advocacy, sex worker outreach, harm reduction support. And importantly, these community health centers can provide food, pantries, and nutrition supports with, with food that is, uh, that has inventory that is based on what the preferences of the community are, that are culturally congruent. Uh, we propose a community forum and, uh, I'm sorry, a farm and food forest where people can grow the food that they want to eat, not only a little garden, but an actual farm where they can grow enough for the community. And provide, we provide stipends, the, the city can provide stipends to community members that work to maintain these. Um, uh, as well as a commercial kitchen for small businesses for, uh, in emergency situations like we experienced in the, in the freeze to provide hot meals, um, to the community. And extremely importantly, medical supply closets, small mutual aid pharmacies, including first aid supplies, menstruation supplies, pregnancy tests, all forms of contraception, including emergency contraception, diapers, baby formula, you know, those, the kinds of over-the-counter things that are essential for people who need cold and flu remedies, et cetera. We expect that all of the above community health center recommendations to cost roughly fifteen million dollars per center. Next slide, please. I have mentioned this briefly, but it really warrants elaboration. We must invest in and expand harm reduction services that provide non-punitive supports for people using drugs. We recommend the establishment of two drop-in centers co-located with an opioid treatment program and including a peer-run mental health crisis respite center and on-demand access to person-centered medication-assisted treatment, also known as methadone. Harm reduction drop-in centers are community-based programs that provide supplies, sterile strength, sterile syringes, safer drug use, naloxone. These programs serve an essential role in HIV and hepatitis prevention as well as providing wound care, street-based outreach, and a range of other services. They are essential elements to a robust public health response to substance use misuse with ample models of, successful models from around the country. These kinds of drop-in centers are exactly what we need to replace all the police engagement with people struggling with, um, substance use and mental health issues. Next slide, please.
You have five minutes, Sudhri.
Thank you, RC. We also recommend investing in developing a trauma-informed assessment process for all programs and ongoing training on trauma-informed care for staff of public health. Whether it's interpersonal violence, historical intergenerational trauma, lifetime experiences of racism, discrimination, or threatening interactions with the police, trauma is long-lasting and has significant implications for community health and safety. We recommend an internal assessment tool and process be developed with the consultation of an advisory group of subject matter experts and directly impacted community members. We can look to the city of San Francisco for a model of this kind of effort and we need to make this meaningful by providing ongoing training. Next slide, last slide. Finally, we have an array of recommendations that speak to the holistic nature of our approach to public health reinvestments. The intersecting conditions of poverty, racism, homelessness, and mental health issues cannot be solved with an overinflated police budget. We need to invest in truly affordable low-income housing, including rent control. Our recommendations outline this in much greater detail. The lack of affordable housing is a public health crisis. When people are without housing, their environments are unstable and unreliable. Food insecurity, little-to-no medical care, and few mental health support services, all compounded by an ongoing pandemic are but a drop in the life of, of people living without permanent housing. We must prioritize getting people into housing first. Young people of color are all too often dragged into systems that dim their light and potential because of racial profiling and excessive policing in their neighborhoods. We need to promote positive youth development programs that recognize young people's strengths and provide opportunities to foster their leadership. Investing in young people is always a win for our community. And the lack of transportation is cited as a major obstacle for people accessing healthcare. We, we need to create better, better public transport, but, but what we do have, we need to make more accessible to low-income residents by at minimum making cap metro free for them and for expanding programs that provide transportation to healthcare. And we must collaborate with the county to expand coverage of the MAP program to improve access to healthcare. Public health has been politicized in our state for a long time, but our city can do more to ensure meaningful access to healthcare for low-income communities. As you consider what reimagining public safety is, we implore you to recognize the importance of a holistic approach that puts the most marginalized at the center of your analysis because making this city livable and safe for them will make it safe for all of us. Thank you for your time. I look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Sudhri. The final group is Uprooting Punitive and Harm Culture in Intersecting Systems. I have David Johnson as our presenter.
Thank you, RC. And thank you, City Council, for, for being present for this. I, I hope everyone's been paying attention because I guarantee you will be tested on this moving forward. The Uprooting Punitive and Harmful Culture in Intersecting Systems Work Group comprised of Sue Gabriel, Maya Pilgrim, Brian Oaks, Bethany Carson, and myself, David Johnson, from Grassroots Leadership. Next slide, please. What is a punitive or harmful culture? The punitive and harmful culture is one based upon assigning blame and punishment while rewarding and commoditizing violence and oppression. It creates a culture of fear. Next slide, please. I captured this from the City of Austin website because I wanted everyone to see that I did not make these things up as far as what the City of Austin reports as its mission and its vision. Next slide, please. The vision, according to the City of Austin, is that we want to be the most livable city in the country. But the question is livable for whom? We criminalize our homeless or our households. We gentrify people out of their own neighborhoods. So livable for whom? Next slide, please. Mission, the City of Austin's mission is to be the best-managed city in the country. Our City Council, you, our City Council, you've already proven to be easily swayed from your commitments and our values. And you've already betrayed the trust in this task of this task force by recently agreeing to a new cadet class against our unified recommendation. Next slide, please. How is this? You, the City Council, this is your marketing. The City Council approves reimagine APD cadet. How is this reimagined if you ignore the people that you have tasked with the very process of reimagining your failed system? We don't want to be used as a prop for marketing purposes so that the word "reimagine" gets tossed around with some value. Next slide, please. Austin is the beacon of sustainability, social equity, and economic opportunity where diversity and creativity are celebrated, where community, where community needs and values are recognized, where leadership comes from its citizen, and where the necessities of life are affordable and accessible to all. That's from the, the vision of the future for Austin on, on the same website. Also, Austin's greatest asset is its people. How? Because I, I, I look to that blurb and I want to ask, sustainable for whom? We ask socially equitable for whom? We ask economic opportunities for whom? Where is diversity and creativity celebrated and how? What community needs and values are recognized? And by whom? What kind of leadership comes from its residents? Let's not lean into the citizenry because those who cannot vote still matter in this community. How will Austin ensure that the, quote, necessities of life are affordable and accessible for all, end quote, since it has failed miserably thus far? Next slide, please. So our proposed recommendations. Our proposal is to operationalize the guiding values of the reimagining public safety task in order to create a process for the City of Austin to evaluate city initiatives for equity, potential harm, and holistic safety. We seek to apply this process to any system and mechanism in the space of public safety with the potential to cause harm and/or save lives. Our goal is to disrupt and deconstruct the pattern of punitive culture within public safety in order to build a public safety system that is liberating, supporting, and holistic in achieving community safety. Next slide, please. So our proposed recommendations are as follows. One, this process should be piloted with the recommendations of the reimagine public safety task based on the initial framework developed by our working group. Two, the city should increase funding to the Equity Office by one million dollars immediately using divested funds to develop the validating tool, expand the Equity Office staff sufficiently to implement this process on an ongoing basis. In the next budget cycle, we recommend an increase of five million dollars to the budget for the Equity Office for further expansion of its staff and capacity, including initiating the process of securing a physical location, a standalone location, preferably in Austin's Eastern Crescent, since that is the area historically most harmed by the City of Austin, for an equity center to house the Equity Office. We must make our investments reflect our commitment. Next slide, please. Any item that comes up on the City Council agenda is subject to review by the Equity Office through the process, through this process, and can choose which item it wishes to review. The intent is that the Equity Office would prioritize reimagine public safety proposals, policing, including the APD budget and contract, public health, housing, and economic development. The Equity Office must be given thirty days prior notice to when the item is placed on the agenda to review any item it notifies council that it wishes to review. The Equity Office review would then be attached to the agenda when both are posted on the website publicly. An Equity Office representative must be given space to present the results of the Equity Review as testimony to the City Council during the scheduled meeting immediately prior to public testimony on the item. The Equity Office review should be the last thing heard publicly before members of the community are able to give their testimony to provide them full information.
David, you have five more minutes. And if you could please slow down for our interpreter, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So the validating tool will be built upon the following framework. Step one is to be rooted in history and shared understanding. That requires completing a historical analysis in the concept, in the context of systemic racism, very much like we were provided at the very beginning of this process. Next slide, please. Step two, center those most directly harmed by these systems. Gather data disaggregated by demographics to tell you who is most harmed or negatively impacted and apply that data throughout the process and with regard to any review or decisions being made. Next slide, please. Initiate an accessible and co-creative process for community involved, very much like what we've done through this task force, where we center those most directly harmed by systems by committing to a process to collaborate, problem-solve, and design with the community in active relationship with the community. Next slide, please. Four is be holistic and tackle the root cause. We have to ask, what are we trying to problem-solve for? And stop wasting resources by throwing them in effectively at symptoms of much greater harm than ill. Next slide, please. Step five is divesting from systems that cause harm. So this is where there's, there's an analysis of the project or program for all of the unintended negative impact and outcomes for those most directly harmed. Next slide, please. Step six, establish community accountability. How do you ensure, how will you ensure accountability? Communicate and evaluate results. Does this project represent sustainability and long-term thinking? Or is it framed to just mitigate and dilute harm? Or will it promote equity and make those historically most harmed better off? Next slide, please. So questions that must be answered by this process through the Equity Office are, what are the top challenges, barriers we encounter to deliver the services or deploy specific resources? I'm not reading them all, just a few of them. What does the data tell us about who's most vulnerable and at risk for this service or need? Were people with lived experience and those most directly impacted a part of your program design? Next slide, please. Who already has access, is over-served, or benefits? What are some unintended consequences for this, from this proposal, for this proposal? Are there existing negative outcomes or disparities that exist for the populations that will be impacted by the proposed goals or process in this proposal? Next slide, please. Next slide, please. I know many of you have quoted this before because it's one of those things a lot of people like to quote. And also since the city seems to put a lot of value in what older white men say, I'm offering this to you. Insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting expecting different results. And I know many have been paying attention to the verdict in the Derek Chauvin trial. And I got to say right now that I despise the fact that cities like Minneapolis and cities like Austin, rather than leaning into what their people are telling them to do differently, they would rather try to control us and corral us into depending on a harmful system for the only semblance of justice that we're ever afforded. Please let our investment as a city reflect our commitment as a city. Because again, each and every one of you sitting on the dais will be tested on this later. Thank you.
Thank you so much, David. And now we will. Um, I want to invite our co-chairs to the front. And also for us to prepare for questions from the council. So um, what I'd ask is that you direct questions. Um, general questions, the chairs would be able to answer. Questions specific to the working group, if you could refer which working group your question is for. Um, and uh, we're going to try and make sure that we're able to do this in um, the next, we have about 15 to 20 minutes for this segment. And we have confirmed that we are going until 5:15. First question?
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Councilor Kassar.
Because of limited time, I just wanted to give a give a brief give a brief acknowledgement to the to the task force, given the how little time we have, and then also to acknowledge the the verdict in Minneapolis. Uh, because many of us have been afraid for days that Chauvin would be found not guilty despite what the video so clearly showed in plain daylight. Uh, as Mr. Johnson noted, while the guilty verdict today provides accountability, it doesn't provide real justice. Real justice would be George Floyd being able to return to his daughter Gianna. Real justice would be never allowing this to happen again. And we have to remember that George Floyd was stopped over a $20 bill. And we cannot rest until black people aren't being killed over $20 like George Floyd. Or for selling loose cigarettes like Eric Garner for having mental health issues in a crisis like David Joseph. And that's the work before us today. That's why 20 million people marched across our country saying Black Lives Matter. That's why some Austinites were nearly killed marching here. This isn't about the politics of the day. This is about something much bigger. And for that reason, I really want to thank the task force for all their hours of work and for their recommendations. I'll be looking closely at these and working with you and with the council to find out how we can continue to reimagine public safety, reduce needless police violence and and make everyone safer and reduce violence in our community by getting to the root issues at hand. So I just want to thank everyone for for their participation and for their hard work, uh, because there is so much more work we have to do if we want real justice and safety in the community.
Thank you.
Colleagues. There's a lot. I have some, Mayor Proten.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it brief. I just wanted to echo Councilmember Kassar's acknowledgement and appreciation of the task force, their hard work, um, their willingness to serve in a difficult capacity. Um, I think I heard somebody from the task force include and thank Carrie Roberts. Uh, so I'm going to tell myself that we are all invested in moving forward in a way that makes sense for our city when this particular group and that particular individual are working together, so much so um, that we acknowledge that while we ideologically don't always get along, we're moving towards the same goal. And I really appreciate that. I think the symbolism there is important, especially on a day like today where uh, it is entirely valid and valuable that we should be giving members of our community some space right now. Um, I was holding my breath until about 10 minutes ago and didn't realize I was doing it until I saw guilty three counts and I exhaled. And so I'd also like very much to extend this opportunity to remind folks in our community that this work will never stop. We have a country that was not designed to be equitable. We have a country that um, fell for the bait, you know, the the lie of whiteness and blackness and supremacy behavior. And so we have a lot of work to do. It won't stop anytime soon. So I hope everybody stays in the fight in a way that you're still taking care of yourself and those around you um, so that we can all stay in it and be healthy while we do that. So again, thanks for all the hard work and effort and service for um, the task force and all my colleagues, frankly. And then everybody who's uh, who's finally exhaling a little bit right now while we wait to move forward towards sentencing, um, I wish you some peaceful, deep breaths.
Thank you so much. I want to encourage um, to wait the queue, meaning to to prioritize in the queue questions for the task force. I know there's a lot of information that was shared. Um, and so really want to make sure that we're able to um, have those rise to the top of this segment of the conversation. Thanks so much.
Councilor Kitchen.
Um, I have a a question. Um, we're we're taking this time right to for questions to the task force members, right? Um, and 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 let me first say, as others have already, I so appreciate the level of of investment in time and energy. It's just really evident how much people care and have poured of themselves into this work. So I I have a lot of processing to do and I will have a lot more questions. But I do have one question for today. And that's, this is for the first group that we heard from with regard to, I forget what it's called, but with regard to survivors of violence. And I really appreciated the um, list of recommendations uh, that they made and we'll be looking through those and seeing how I can be um, helpful and furthering them. But my question relates to, and I I think they spoke to this, but I just wanted to ask them if they have any particular insights or perspectives with regard to homeless individuals experiencing violence while living on the streets, particularly uh, women who may have experienced sexual violence. Um, I I would think that many of these strategies would be helpful for those individuals too. But I wanted to see if they had anything they wanted to add about um, the experiences of that segment of our population.
And I'll invite our host to bring Amanda Lewis, if she's still available.
Hi, I, yes, I'm still here. I can't get my video to work. Thank you so much, Councilmember Kitchen, for the question. We did have recommendations just around housing and the importance of um, not only the prevention of making sure people are housed, um, but the risk factors of people um, experiencing homelessness on the street are much more severe. Um, it's kind of, I think, wrapped in our sex worker um, recommendations. We have some around homelessness. Um, but I I I think just generally um, the need for diversity of housing options and entries into a system of housing, more permanent supportive housing, I think the city has talked a lot about. Um, I think y'all actually were just talking about supportive housing, but um, just the need for, um, you know, not just um, shelter because honestly, sometimes shelters can't be, is not as safe if you're dealing with complex trauma and then everyone in complex trauma being close together. Um, so uh, the importance of diversity of housing options um, in our recommendations that we mentioned. Jen, I don't know, Jen or Asia, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Amanda. Um, in addition to those points, I want to draw your attention, councilmembers, to the recommendation regarding sex worker safety programming where we do recommend the decriminalization of what are currently minor crimes because that those sort of issues have an impact on the environment for folks who are homeless as well. Um, for unhoused people that might be ticketed for those things. Um, and that creates more of an environment of risk for um, unhoused people who may experience assault. Um, and then we also have a recommendation that I think Asia can speak to about the availability of brief flexible funding. Um, we refer to the Bridge to Safety pilot model. Asia, I don't know if you want to add anything about that?
Yes, um, so we do recommend expanding something similar to Bridge to Safety at additional sites so that we're not completely reliant on shelters, but those in need of a safe place to go have brief financial assistance toward um, housing application fees, security deposits, relocating if necessary. Um, so that's addressed. And then one of the largest fiscal um, notes recommended in here is related to diversification of housing support, including a housing trust. Um, and including brief hotel safety net stays like Survive to Thrive currently offers. Um, and so we have a swath of recommendations detailed in the longer recommendations that you may have received from us. And if you would like to talk more about that, we're happy to give you more info. It's pretty lengthy.
Uh, yes, I would love to find a time to visit with you all more. I'm I'm I uh, am appreciative of all of the recommendations that were made across all of the um, groups and will be delving into all of them. Um, I know that this is one uh, that is um, uh, you know, that is particularly um, particularly staggering for us to deal with. It's really, it's it's hard enough for people living on the streets, but women at risk of assault on the streets, it's horrifying. And so I look forward to talk with you all more about all of your recommendations and and um, plus to be part of the the work in helping you move those forward.
Councilor Alter.
Thank you. Um, first, I want to just thank all of you for your hundreds and thousands of hours that you put into helping us the next steps in our journey to reimagine public safety for all um, here in Austin. Um, I had a couple of comments and questions for the first group as well. Um, a lot of my work um, related to public safety has focused on victims, whether it's sexual assault response, um, gun violence, um, the launch of the Office of Violence Prevention. So I I I really appreciate some really um, interesting and new ideas in here and look forward to working with you to see what we um, can implement. So I want to make one comment and then ask a question. So um, you may or may not be aware, but um, the they're in the process of interviewing for the Director of the Office of Violence Prevention right now. Um, and at our next council meeting, we'll be taking up, I believe, two contracts that have to do with the data analysis that needs to happen so that when that new director comes on, we have um, the data and analysis we need to fashion a um, a strategic plan for that office. And I hope that that's a really good place for these thoughts and ideas to be integrated into other city processes so that we can um, combine these because there's a lot of overlap um, in the, and understandably, because I think some of you probably served on the the Gun Violence Task Force that launched the Office of Violence Prevention, but that there's overwork in the sex overlap in the sex workers and in some of the other pieces. Um, so I wanted to kind of just flag that. Um, and then um, believe that a lot of the stuff you're talking about for victim services dovetails nicely with some of the directions that we've been going. And I think it's a a really um, interesting way to approach the fact that even just for sexual assault, we have 10% who are who are reporting. And so maybe providing some of these other avenues gives us a better better um, you know, way of providing healing, but also to bring some folks to justice as well. Uh, but my question is, I didn't fully understand the recommendations for the Victim Services Department and whether it should be in APD or not. Um, so can you clarify that and and help me understand? You know, if you're for it or against it, or are you providing provisos, if it has to be moved, it should be this, or it should be stay in APD and we should add to it in these various ways and maybe those things are not in APD? So I'd like some further clarification.
Absolutely. It's so funny. I'm hearing um, a police siren. I apologize for that. We we didn't um, so what we did was separate um, administrative decoupling from physical decoupling, right? So the conversation of, um, you know, can a can victim services remain co-located with APD? Have access to the same um, systems? And still be able to respond uh, to victims and in communities along with APD? Because we felt like that was really key to those system advocates being able to advocate with the survivors that end up um, reporting uh, to law enforcement, even though it's a small percentage, we see the value of the work that victim services done, does. And so our recommendation is that that continues. Um, and and the other piece of that was if there were to be an administrative decoupling, which looks like um, victim services being, you know, led by someone outside of APD, maybe uh, the Public Safety City Manager or somewhere else or Public Health. Um, then they need to still be able to have those touch points within APD, being co-located in those departments um, that that those victim service counselors um, support, right? So so we kind of saw those as two different things. Can you have the physical decoupling? Um, or can you have an administrative decoupling without a a physical one? Um, and so if we're to have an administrative decoupling, these are the things um, needed to do that work. And we listed those items within the recommendations. Our working group hasn't made a specific call on if we think that the administrative decoupling is um, beneficial. I think that would require more community engagement. Um, and we wanted to say that the bigger question is so few people are using that system. Um, and yet that that department is underfunded. So there needs to be a separate conversation about how APD is um, prioritizing the needs of victims that are um, reporting to law enforcement. So I I I don't necessarily see that as a reimagining conversation. I see that as a little different. But the reimagining to us is the need for comprehensive, community-based and led um, uh, healing resources that are culturally resonant and led by those communities.
Thank you, Amanda. Just a reminder to our council members also to speak slowly for our interpreters.
Colleagues, we've been asked if we have further questions at this point for the uh, task force. Uh, Mayor Proten. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Jeff?
Sorry about that. I just, thank you. I just wanted to jump in really quickly just to draw the Councilmember Alter's attention. Um, in the, thank you, RC. Um, slowly, I will say. Um, to draw the council member's attention in the longer document that you received um, to our recommendations um, in victim services, their number, and we have recommendation two, which does um, cover what Amanda was just discussing about the victim services manager reporting um, at a higher level than is currently. So that was a change that we made. And then we addressed in the first recommendation, the physical decoupling and what the process would need to look like for that. Um, it's page 16 on our document, but I don't know what page it might be on yours.
Colleagues, Mayor Proten, if you'd raise your hand.
I did, and it'll be fast. It wasn't a question so much as a statement. I was just wanting to point out how excited I am to see the development, the further development of the community health worker component. Workforce Solutions is working on so much, you know, given that we're going to have access to some pretty unprecedented support financially for really diving into root causes of things, including all the things that are included in addressing cyclical poverty. So I'm really excited about that part. And I wonder if during the course of the process, y'all had an opportunity already to touch base with those workforce solutions people, to just start thinking about what building that into their systems for training, retraining, bringing people into new fields and all that.
Oh, so now you're allowed, you're supposed to be like this?
Oh, I'm sorry, that was a question. Whether or not that conversation is already happening, it's one that you guys are looking forward to. I'm just sort of curious where we are in that process.
Yeah, I would say this is suited to be, I don't have video access, but I would say we learned about that workforce development process as we were going through this conversation and are very excited about, you know, engaging in this because we have strong ideas, both from national networks of community health workers. And, I mean, this, community health workers are from OAS. This is a global public health approach. This is not something we made up, clearly. This is evidence-based, research-based, you know, human technology. It's people connecting with people. And so as you mentioned, we learned about this workforce development and think that it's an incredible opportunity. And coupled with the community health centers or the neighborhood hubs, having a home base for community health workers really enables that, you know, on-the-street connection with what's going on in a community so that when there is an emergency need, when there is a crisis that needs intervention or support, it doesn't have to be the police that we call on for those things, that it can be community-based public health workers. So yeah, that's a very exciting direction that the city's already going in, and I think these recommendations can only strengthen that effort. And I hope that the scale-up can be part of this sort of more broadly funded effort, so not exclusively from reinvesting divested resources.
Absolutely. And that's the other part of it that I really appreciate is that community-level hub, you know, taking that real-time community-level needs assessment and then just recognizing throughout the course of the pandemic, moving forward into the vaccine distribution strategy, the winter storm, watching how frequently those community hubs activate anyway. They don't even need us to empower them to do so, they're going to do it anyway. So what I think needs to happen on our part is having a more comprehensive back-and-forth relationship and fully supporting those efforts for communities to go beyond, you know, being resilient. You know, there's some folks that are working on an initiative that's beyond resilience. They're talking about anti-fragility. And so just thinking about how, you know, communities really having the opportunity to advocate for themselves is very exciting with our support. So thank you all again, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Madison and Mayor, thank you so much for allowing me to co-facilitate with you. We are going to take one last question before we move into the final segment, talking about process and next steps. And we have our co-chair, Paula Rojas, who is queued up if there are no further questions.
Catherine Fuentes, did you want to ask a question?
Sure. I just want to make a brief comment to share my support for the investment in public health and in the Community Health Workers Program. I think that's an incredible way and a much-needed strategy for our community, especially as we seek to empower our community and build up resilience. And I also wanted to share my support for a guaranteed income pilot. I think that's another innovative way for us to reinvest in economic justice. And as we're thinking, and I also want to share my gratitude to the task force for really bringing forward holistic strategies, and I appreciate all the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, then we'll pass it to Paula.
Thank you, everyone, for staying with us, both city council members and community members watching at home, because this has been a long process so far and we're not done yet. We want to get to the point of some sense of next steps and resolution. As I mentioned in the opening, I'm Paula Rojas, she/her/they, I'm a representative of CCU, Communities of Color United for Racial Justice. And since I was voted as co-chair for this task force, I now feel very personally accountable for the time, effort, hope, pain that many community members have poured into this process. And so I wanted to talk to you a little bit about, after, as you've said, I don't know exactly if we're counting, but thousands of volunteer hours that have been put into this process, major reservations surfaced from our community task force members when you, City Council, moved forward and voted for restarting the APD Police Academy despite our formal task force vote against it and many testimonies the day of your vote. At that point, many task force members wanted to walk away from the process altogether. And after deep heartfelt reflection, we all decided to see this process through, to honor the process and to honor the directly impacted community members that we are representing. But I wanted to open up the floor for other task force members to speak directly with City Council, because I think we want to think together about this process and where we are. And then we'll circle back and I want to make sure we explicitly talk through next steps before we end at 5:15.
Thank you, Paula. Task force members?
I know the web access part.
Hi, this is Amanda Lewis speaking. And as you know, I chair the Survivor Task Force, the working group for the task force. And I just wanted to share with y'all that we had a working group meeting the same day as that vote for the cadet class, and members of our working group were wondering if their work was even valuable, if it even mattered. We were doing a process of hearing from survivors about their needs, and there was concern that we were asking people to uncover their trauma and wondering if that would even, if it was ethical to do that, knowing that the city was moving forward without hearing those voices. So I just, I wanted to share that. I think that we have a responsibility to make it count when people share their pain. So I thought that was something that I definitely wanted to add to the conversation, how important it is that when we ask communities to give their truth and their pain, that we take action and then we show that the community cares and is listening.
Thank you, Amanda. And I'd like to open it, if there are any council members that want to respond.
Mayor Proten.
I suppose the long and short of it is, I don't want anybody to feel like their contribution to these processes, which are very difficult and which do, in fact, put people in a position of being vulnerable. I don't want them to think that any of us make any decisions that we make on this side of the dais lightly, on or off of the dais. We're all your neighbors and friends and one Facebook click away will show you that we all know the same 137 people. So I hope that you all will accept that we often have to make very difficult decisions that don't necessarily 100% align with how we'd like to see things go, but we do have to make decisions. And there are a lot of factors that play into it, but it's certainly not lost on us, the amount of work and time and personal effort and contribution to the process that gets made. And I certainly think that, I speak for some of the colleagues that I know we had this conversation, that we don't ever want, you know, members of our community who pour themselves into a process to feel like we don't appreciate the effort, because that's not the case, ever. I think the other thing I'd say about that is while I can appreciate that we are opening up the floor for questions and comments and frankly, criticism right now, I don't want y'all to think that we've got to squeeze it in between now and 5:15. My hope is that we continue these conversations, you know, independent of one another, independent of this larger gathering that folks are reaching out to our offices, moving forward through this process and beyond.
Councilor Casar.
Right, I think that we need to, we should all have a conversation about how to move forward from here. But I think that there's opportunities, for example, eviction prevention was raised as one of the issues, which I know we're going to be bringing up in Housing Committee, and there may be opportunities to start moving some of that forward. I know that in Public Safety Committee, we've thought about some of the issues that have been raised here, and we could actually potentially bring some of that important work there. There may, you know, there's components of this that you're raising questions for the budget, and the city manager is going to be developing his budget, you know, probably already starting to work on that right now. And so I think that there are really timely next steps for us to pick up. But of course, we wanted to receive the recommendations from you here today so that we could have it all laid out to us and told to us in your own words, and then we would hopefully co-create alongside you what the, what some of the next steps might be, where we could have, you know, strong majority support on the dais to move forward with some really important items.
I also think that it's important to honor this work by just not letting the report come in. Manager, I would be very much interested in knowing what yours and the staff's reaction is to these proposals and to be able to respond to them all so that we make sure that they come back to us that way and that none of them just appear in a report and then people don't know what to do with them next.
Yeah, thank you, Karen. That's exactly our next step is because we are just receiving these now and certainly wanting to pass those off to the appropriate staff partners and have them do some analysis and then working with some of our committee chairs too. I could see some of these recommendations with the staff analysis, coming back to a Public Safety Committee or Health Community Services Committee. And so we'll be working with your colleagues and making sure that this is not the last time that we are hearing and talking about these recommendations, that we are taking them all very seriously and looking at how they might be implemented and what the different implications of the implementation might be. So that is certainly what we would be seeing, and I'll see if our deputy city manager wants to add anything else as well. Mary?
Thank you, manager. And I'll just say that we have, in fact, done exactly that. We have sent that to staff. We take them very seriously. There are some great recommendations here that, again, go beyond the traditional notions, right, of what we started with in public safety and excited to sort of evaluate those and see, staff had actually been excited to see some of those presentations. So both finance and our departments are looking at them now, and we hope to come back and share those with you. I have to say, it's a little bittersweet for me as I will be looking from afar to see how these recommendations come in, as I have sat with this task force since August, and know the passion even amidst disagreement, but the passion that everyone who worked on this task force and those on the work group have brought to this, really thoughtful approaches and thoughts. And so just know that your staff has taken a look at them and making sure that we can marry with whether there are fiscal impact, policy impacts, legal or statutory impacts. We want to make sure that you, as council, are fully informed so that we can together make decisions moving forward.
And I didn't, by my question, want to suggest that that was the only way for things to move forward. Councilor Casar, you mentioned evictions, and our offices are working on that right now. Nothing has to wait for that, but I just want to make sure that we don't miss anything or drop anything that's been raised by the task force. Paula, did you?
Yes, Paula, thank you. I have some task force members who are trying to speak, and they're not, their voice is not coming through, so I just wanted, they're texting me. Monica Guzman from GAVA, David Johnson also, I think it's, you know, this technology, if we could get them back on the mic real quick. Thank you.
And just, come on, to the incredible work of our CTM staff in navigating and negotiating a lot of this logistics today. So thank you, team, for helping to facilitate this. I really appreciate it. Looks like Monica and David are now on.
Thank you, yes, ditto. And in multiple languages, we're so appreciative.
Okay, so I can help? Okay, thank you again, Monica Guzman, GAVA, she/her/hers. Again, you know, thank you for the opportunity to present all the work the task force and the work group members have done. But one thing I want to say is that it's imperative that we see the city manager's office, staff, council, you know, the city as a whole, that they make a public commitment to prioritize these recommendations and elevate them, that there is public communication, sorry if I need to slow down, that there is public communication going forward, as well as working with all the different groups represented, not only on the task force, but in the work groups as well. And that we want to hear a statement from the city manager and council in a, hopefully sooner than later, council meeting, but ahead of the budget being publicly announced by city manager crunk. Prior to those budget hearings, we need to hear back a timeline. We need to hear back, what are your next steps now that you have heard from us? Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. David? Are you able to unmute?
Alicia is also in the queue to speak.
Thank you, Paula. Alicia, are you able to unmute?
Can folks hear me?
Yes.
We can. And just a reminder to speak slowly for our interpreters.
Will do. David, if you are able to come in in a moment, feel free to interrupt. So Alicia, I swear to Austin, she/her/they pronouns, I just want to uplift the fact that, as many other task force members have already mentioned, right, immediately after the vote on the police academy, we really, a lot of folks felt this heart, I as someone that is directly impacted, right, and really saw an opportunity, right, in this, in allowing, my imagination, I dare, I say, hope, right, to be lifted in a possibility of this is the city responding, right, a city that often centers itself as a beacon of blue hope in a place like Texas, that it was going to rise, that it was going to rise to the occasion. And after that vote, what I really found myself, you know, questioning was for what and for whom, right? For whom had this countless hours of work been for? Definitely, we are not into underdressing, and I will personally state that I chose to continue engaging in this work group because I had been the face, I had been the person to open her mouth and ask undocumented people to offer their thoughts, to offer up a Saturday, right, of their time to come in and provide us some of these recommendations. Now, throughout this whole process, the vote- this whole process, the, the vote on, on the task force, I'm sorry, on the Police Academy, was not the only time that as a task force, I feel we felt undermined by this very city council, right, that now is saying, thank you for all your time, we, this are sound, these recommendations all sound so great, but really want to uplift what Monica has, has said, and asked, demanded of y'all, where's your timeline, an actual timeline that gives us tangible action steps, right, not for next year's budget, not for a two-year future budget, but actually tangible steps, right, to reimagine safety within this budget cycle. We're looking at, you know, in, in, if we had not brought it up in our last meeting, I do not believe any changes would have been made to the possible mid-budget vote that would have happened this coming Thursday. And I just want to note that, city council, we are watching, but more than watching, we are ready to hold you accountable for what you all have said here today, that y'all are looking to implement this, right? We, we continued on this work, because we're accountable to our community. I'm accountable to myself, for my safety, for my nibblings, and we're gonna hold you accountable to what y'all have stated again and again, as holding this as a way that the City of Austin wants to move. And in that, I really hope that, as Monica has said, y'all are able to provide more than praises for the, for the, the recommendations, but an actual public commitment of we're willing to invest X amount of dollars into our neighbors, as somebody has said, here we are, into our friends, into the 137 people that we all commonly know on Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. David, I seem to have lost David's name on the participant list, but if you can pipe up, if you can hear me, and if you can come off mute, I see you now. After David, we'll go back to Paula.
Hello, everyone. You know, I feel like, I feel like this whole, I feel like this culture of right to comfort has us playing these nice roles. And say things I like, say things like, don't throw out the good, you know, don't throw out the, that's just a way of saying, you know, a little bad stuff isn't gonna hurt you too much. You know, I've heard all of you on the dais in some way either dance around really difficult topics to talk about, like topics that don't involve victims, like survivor, violent survivor, like I, I see very little leaning in from the council that is so quick to do things against recommendation. I'm not seeing any of that zeal or speed right now from any of you to lean into any of the really difficult conversations, like the ones around inequity, the ones around the racist policing, just the racist policies of this city, period. Let alone the genderist and the sexualitist and the classes and all of the oppressive policies of this, of this city. None of you are leaning into your, your tattered relationships of trust with this community, and your failure to truly uphold your values, our values, and the mission and vision that you plaster on everything. And then I hear language, unfortunately, you know, Mayor Protim, with all due respect, that was some of the weakest, most diluted and watered down, I'm trying to play both sides of the fence stuff I have heard in a very long time. And I say that because I feel like everyone is afraid to be honest. I have said many times before, how Mayor Adler is pretty much milquetoast for most things, and how I expect everything that's possible to come from the white woman brigade. And I'm in District 5, so yes, Ann Kitchen is the white woman that represents my constituency. But I need to say this, we don't need to necessarily hear how we may not be able to get everything we want, but everyone's listening. No, we are beyond a point of listening to you tell us that you're listening. We are at a place where we need you to act, because your words are empty. And if you, Mayor Protim, have forgotten all of the things that this city has done to harm our community, so much so that you are unable to simply say, yeah, this is messed up, and we're gonna figure out how we can put these recommendations in play. See, that's the kind of commitment we are looking for from each and every one of you, the commitment through which you say, we, we doubled down when you said defund APD. We, as the city council, doubled down and said, well, if you say defund APD, then we need you, the people that have been most harmed, to do the heavy lifting again, and give us the ways that we, your leadership, can determine how to do the things that you're asking us, or rather, demanding us to do. And we stepped up, and aha, we did it. We gave you, and have given you, hard numbers, supporting data. I have been on calls with many of you, from Alter through Ellis, I've been on calls with many of you, and heard things like, we're just waiting to hear what the, the task force recommends. That's what we're just waiting for. But when we give you what we recommend, first off, you bull, you bulldoze and steamroll it, and then today, it is, well, I, I have to get back and I have to look at some things. Black and brown people in Austin are dying slowly and quickly because of your actions and inaction. So please, could you just possibly consider maybe just once to say, hey, we have not handled this with the priority that it deserves. And since we challenged you to give us solutions, and you gave us solutions, and what we need to do is the City of Austin leadership is figure out how to make those solutions realities. And if they can't be made realities, then you, the City of Austin leadership, because I can't make, say we, I can't even roleplay like that. My integrity is far too strong and clear.
David, I'm so
But what I challenge you to do is step up to the challenge that we answered, and figure out a way to make these things happen, or at the bare minimum, have open transparent conversations with all of us in this city, but especially those of us who, whether sitting on the task force, or participating in the community engagement process, or in the working group, have committed our time and our trauma to this process, you can at least sit down and have conversations with us about why those, I hope, very few things are not possible to implement. Thank you.
Thank you, David. We're gonna move to Paula, who is going to close us out, as we have a hard stop in three minutes. Paula?
Okay. That was a lot of emotion. I guess I just want you to feel the emotion. Virtually, it's difficult, but city council, mayor, I do really appreciate all of your acknowledgements of our collective hard work. Yet, we are sure, and you heard us, that we are not wanting our work to end up like other task force reports, because this is not a report. They end up on a shelf. We, that is not what will happen here, we are sure. We will make sure from our end, and we hope you will do the same. You formally launched the reimagining public safety process, you did as a city, and we actually did it. Our recommendations are immediately actionable. We are in communication with organizations and media all around the country. Everyone is watching Austin, asking us, as this is a city that is leading the defunding of police. I would say, especially with the verdict this afternoon, we need to understand that our recommendations speak to a practical vision for truly reimagining how we could all be safer in a city, no matter how progressive and blue it might be, that is leading in officer-involved shootings per capita. These are really historic times where we all need to live differently. That's what I just want, it's, this is like never before in our lifetime, and what I feel is living with our hearts in our hands, which means to take true risks. Obviously, there's another side that doesn't want these recommendations to go through. But if you bring the longer historical view, and know, right now is a time where it's possible, it's actually possible to transform. So remember, just like the abolitionists during the time of formalized slavery, who went against the laws and practices of the time, because yes, rent control is not legal according to the state, but they went against the laws and practices of the time. You too have that opportunity to make historic transformation in practice. We want to hear, when will you make the decisions about these recommendations? Will there be any in the mid-year budget cycle amendment? And will there be any in the full next fiscal year cycle amendment, budget cycle amendment? I think we, we deserve, we've earned to know that information from you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. This task force has been such an honor to support, and I want to really say, if anybody's ever used the word impossible, this group has done absolutely incredible work with so many obstacles, including just not enough time, over and over again. Every single meeting that I've been involved in, there's been some type of police violence or event in the midst of the meeting that we've been facilitating, and it's been steadfast in its work. And I just want to reiterate what an incredible honor it's been to support y'all's leadership.
So we are waiting for your reply, and I know that it might not happen at 5:16, but I'd love to hear from mayor, city manager, can we expect a reply of when and how these recommendations can be integrated into this or next year's fiscal budget, please?
Yeah, I'll start, mayor. Certainly, this has been an incredibly powerful couple hours, and really appreciate the chance to hear these recommendations laid out. And as our deputy city manager said, we are now in the process of working with our staff to do that fiscal analysis, legal analysis. We know that on Thursday, there are some of the decoupling elements that are, are forecused with consideration. Some of those have been aligned with the work that the, the work group groups have done. But we also know that there are going to be fiscal impacts for the next year's budget. And so I have already been talking to our deputy city manager, and our financial staff, and the reimagining task force leadership team, on how to ensure that, to the extent that we can bring feedback, recommendations that would be incorporated into this next year's budget, that they would be part of that proposal. And at least we would be encouraging that dialogue going forward, whether it's through the council committee process, or ensuring that there's further communication with our community members that have been so engaged in these efforts. So looking forward to that. I know that part of decoupling even the 911 Communications Department is, is a good next step for Thursday's consideration, but there's so much more work that we need to do.
You're muted, mayor.
I think, I think the answer as to what the next step is, is what we asked the manager to do to come back with staff's evaluation. You know, I watched some of the task force meeting, and then followed some of the discussions. And the ones I saw were not always conversations where everybody on the task force is agreed with one another as to direction, or scope, or scale, or action. And I think the council needs to go through the same kind of process with respect to suggestions, and ideas, and concepts that are brought forward. And that will happen, and will be very public and very transparent. And there'll be lots of different voices that have the opportunity to, to weigh in and be part of that. But yes, we did ask for this. And we asked for this because there was a desire among the council that I still believe is very strong, to reimagine public safety, and to make our cities safer than it has been, especially for, for, for people of color in our city. And that resolve remains. And I think you'll see the process as it, as it moves out. Some of these suggestions, like we talked about a moment ago, probably move out on their own. Some of these suggestions will, will, will have the response back from the, the manager, who has the opportunity to just incorporate things directly into the budget that he presents to the council, because he can choose to present a budget. Part of it can be the work that is the work of the various council, the various committees. And then ultimately, there's a budget at the end of this process. But I suspect that because of the, the importance and the significance, and in some respects, the far-reaching nature of the recommendations that were made, they need the same kinds of conversations in front of our council that you had in the task forces. Counselor Casar.
And mayor, and I want to respond, you know, the chair mentioned whether we would be having a mid-year budget amendment process, or the, the budget that's presented by the manager. Manager, I don't know if you want to clarify here, but my sense is that this year, just like last year during COVID, that we aren't going to be going through sort of the, the, sometimes we would have a mid-year budget amendment if there's some surplus dollars, but my sense is that really you, we're not really going through that, I haven't heard that that process is anticipated for this year, but that we are looking, for example, at how we would best spend American Rescue Plan dollars and other city emergency dollars, but that there isn't really like a mid-year budget amendment process happening between here and the presentation of your budget, or at least you don't foresee that, or do you?
I mean, so thank you, council member. And certainly even the proposal that we're bringing forward for Thursday's consideration is part of that ongoing effort. And so even though there may not be the larger mid-year budget amendment process that hasn't been in my time actually, under the last three years, but we are looking at in real time as we see these proposals, as we see opportunities for either decoupling or, or using funds in different ways, that we bring them to council, to make sure that those things are taken care of as they become apparent.
Right. And, and so, and Paula, please let me know if I, if I misinterpret something, but I want to provide the clarity that I think that, you know, one of the bigger moments for us might be, because it's soon, might be the budget itself that comes, and, and also the, and then also, there are going to be moments where we are thinking of making some adjustments, especially with federal dollars and city emergency dollars. And some of the things you presented here, I think we might be discussing really in short time, in short order, because there are some of the emergency response programs people have been talking about, as Councilmember Fuentes mentioned, a more recurring monthly check for people who really need it. That, we kind of have something line item for that, for future spending, sort of a rise 3.0, but we haven't laid out exactly how that might work, and maybe having it be more recurring and monthly might be an important thing for us to look at really quickly before we launch that. Or eviction prevention funds is something we're talking about probably before the budget cycle comes up. So some of this, I, I think, genuinely, I mean, I do want to speak, I mean, I recognize David's emotion and point that he's made, and your hard ask to us about, when is some of this gonna come up? But authentically, I think each of us actually, to do our jobs well, have to look through each of the recommendations and find out which ones can we do in short order, and must we, which ones really are for the budget, which ones do we need to go back to a broad set of people in our district to have a conversation about it. And so I, I hear the urgency and respect the, the work. But I, but I do want to, to, you know, mention that, you know, this is, y'all, we're a critical task force, but we do have to go back to our communities and look at the, and look at the policy and see what it is that we can get done. And I want to commit to you here that there are parts of this that I think might be able to be worked on before the next budget cycle, but there's plenty of it that might take till then, or might take longer, because they're big ideas. And it isn't because folks don't care that folks may not speak up right now with the plan. It might be also because we should respect the work enough to really read through the recommendations, ask task force members their thoughts, ask community members in our districts their thoughts, and then, and then come back to you with how we might best execute some shared goals.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council.
Go ahead, Paula.
I'm just at this point speaking on behalf of other task force members, because I have the mic, but um I really appreciate what the clarifications that just came out. Thank you, council member Assad and city manager for opening that up for us. These are very basic things that have not been clear. And just so you'll know what it feels like to be on this side, we thought, what we were told from the beginning, and this was the convening with Nuria's uh office, which we're grateful for, was that we were all working towards having our recommendations ready for the mid-year budget amendment. So we worked and worked and worked, knowing that actually it would take longer to, that we would have liked to have more time. You can ask my kids, why I have dirty dishes, why I've been up so late? And I'm one of hundreds, because we were trying to make the mid-year budget cycle amendment. That's what we were told. And now you're telling us that's not a thing. And now it's, it could be here, it could be there. I just want you to understand what that feels like on this side, where we're, it's very slippery. Of course, you need time to read through it. Of course, you need time to figure out where and how to integrate it. But you're not being transparent with us, and that is what's leading to so much of the emotion, you know? So I'd like to walk away today knowing a little more clearly, because we were told there was going to be a mid-year budget amendment about the reimagining money that we were weighing in on, which is what we did. So when is that happening, or is that no longer on the table? Sorry to be emotional, but you've got to get how I feel right now, right?
I appreciate that, council members, if you permit me for a moment, and I appreciate that, Paula. I I want to be very clear, too. I mean, I I believe I said this time and time again to the task force, that what we were coming for in council in March that we then pushed to April was because we as staff had a direction to come back to council and talk about the decoupling. And we offered that if work groups weren't ready for March or for April, they could always come back later. So we have said several times now that the ability to come forward with recommendations to council is open-ended. There is not one magic period in March where that needed to happen, that we could always come back. So I just want to own that, and I want to say that we have said that, because I don't want to put that on council members um as we have moved forward with those conversations.
I hear what you're saying. Thank you, Nuria, for that. But all of those conversations were in the context of if we didn't make it, if we didn't get it together in time for the mid-year budget cycle, there was more time. And that was clear to all of us. I don't think I'm, you know, I I I think those were many of the conversations that we had. You all put aside money for reimagining of this year's budget. What will happen with that money? It's in this year's budget. It's not next year. We were weighing in on that decision. Who is making that decision? What will happen with those funds?
I will say too, and Ed, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, because I know that it came up at a different task force meeting, that the same buckets that we had for decoupling and reimagining will continue forward um as we as we continue the work, right? Because we want to honor that. We know that there are some things that will take longer rather than shorter, and we will keep those funds in place uh through the next uh year's budget. Am I incorrect in that, Ed?
No, that's exactly what we'll do. If um if if any of the reimagining work that can't be implemented this year, we'll continue the reimagined fund into the next fiscal year.
In my sense, Paula, as that was set up, is there were monies that we moved immediately uh there as part of the budget process. There was the reimag, or the decoupling funds, that we said, these are things that the council has identified that we want to be able to move, and those are the things that are moving now. And then there was the reimagining funds, that we never went through the the merits of any of them, but said these were the ones that we want to be able to discuss with respect to the future. And that conversation still has to, still has to happen. But the the amendment process, as those things are resolved, also just doesn't happen two times. I mean, it's not just a mid-year or even a next year, uh as I would hope and expect, that as the the manager and staff is able to take a look at those recommendations that they'll bring back to us, the ones that are important for us to address. And there were, we were having conversations that obviously we're going to need to continue, even if they don't happen this week, with respect to 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 park policing, uh that was uh uh nearly teed up uh as a potential issue. But at some point, we have to and will need to and want to address all of those things. They all don't have to come back together at once. Committees can bring things forward, and they can bring things forward now. So there's a lot here. I mean, the work that you did as task forces is pretty wide-ranging and pretty extensive. Uh, there are other ideas that other people have also uh asked for us to make sure that we work into these conversations that are happening right now. Uh, and we need to, we need to honor those as well. So I I hear what you're saying, the the fact that we're not stopping now and doing a mid-year budget process does not minimize the work that was done in any way, nor does it put time constraints on it, nor does it say it can't come up before a certain time. You've given us a lot here, and and for that, you you have met the charge, and you have done what it was that we that we asked you to do, uh and now it comes back to us. All right, I I am cognizant of the fact that we're now past where it was that we promised we would uh we would get past to. So uh I do want to close just with the the touching back just for a second on the verdict that we just saw. Uh, and and just to comment that that for me, if you're going to actually try to find justice uh for those events in in Minneapolis, uh there's the the immediacy of a of a of a verdict and and that measure of accountability. But I'm not sure there's a better way to provide or find justice uh in in that action than at the very same time that verdict was coming down, for us to be getting the, receiving the the report of our task force on 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 reimagining policing. There are a lot of other communities that have talked about doing this. I'm not familiar with very many of them that are actually moving forward and in some ways already have. I'm going to end the meeting. I do want to thank Brian Oaks and Farah Muscatin and 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 Ray Ariano. Uh, I think we we thanked Nuria. You're moving on as a a loss for us. So good luck where you're going. Manager, uh uh you need to now take these recommendations and review them and bring them back to us uh without limitation for uh intervening council action. If anyone doesn't have anything else, at 5:33, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting. All right, then. 5:33, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and thanks to the to the task force participants.